Welcome, everyone, to the Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting, November 3, 2022. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, and agenda of this meeting, also by mailing such announcements to the Home News and Tribune, filing such copy of the announcement with the municipal clerk, and also listing the agenda on the municipal website. Ms. See, can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Stoner.
Here.
Ms. Chevalier.
Here.
Mr. Scogno is absent, Ms. Andrews is absent, Ms. Testaverde is absent, and Mr. Sykalski is absent. Mr. Dasty?
Ah, here.
Ms. Shapiro?
Here.
Mr. Prosska?
Here.
Mr. Want?
You.
And myself, Ms. See, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. See. I'm just going to ask for the record that the board attorney makes note of something on the record as it attendance.
Sure. So there's one application on tonight. It is a D variance, and speaking with the council earlier, I mean certainly the D variance requires five affirmative votes. There are four board members present tonight, which is a quorum. But as we discussed with council, we'll have him acknowledge on the record, he understands that there's no vote going to be taken tonight, and the other members of the board will be required to listen and to review the tapes prior to the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Dasty. Also, for those watching at home, or if you're, I don't know what your business here is in the audience, on the agenda, there are three applications listed. Only one will be heard this evening, and that one is sixty-six dash twenty-twenty Z, that's Medina Majid. And the other two that will not be heard this evening are twenty-eight dash twenty-two Z, Interbolt Automotive Corp., located seventeen oh six English Town Road, and also fifty dash twenty-twenty-one Z, OBNJ LLC, and location is sixty-nine Highway thirty-five. If you're interested in those matters, they're being rescheduled to the agenda twelve fifteen, December fifteenth. There, I would assume there's going to be further notice on the, oh, no, there would not be further notice.
There would not be, Mr. Chairman.
There's no further notice. If you're interested in those matters, they're going to be put on the agenda December fifteenth. So we only have one agenda, if you're watching at home, of one application this evening. Prior to doing that, we do have some housekeeping issues. I would ask all people, all the people here in the room, everybody's got a cellphone, please mute it so it doesn't start ringing and interfere with the testimony this evening. Also, we are being televised live by OBTV fifteen, as well as YouTube Live. I ask people, anyone that's going to be testifying this evening, as well as the board members, please talk directly into the microphones. They are directional, so they won't pick you up. If you're sitting at the witness table, make sure that the light is green on your mic stand, and I know the wireless, the handheld, has to be activated if you have a witness later on, councilor. I'm sure he'll be able to do that. So board members, just make sure when you're speaking that the green light is on. Moving on, we have a number of resolutions.
Chairman Sullivan, before we proceed, I just want to intercheck. You might want to announce that the December fifteenth meeting is a virtual meeting because there are two applications. These applications were filed quite, two, couple of months in advance, and we would like to wrap them up before the end of the year. So although it's a C night, we have two D applications that are scheduled. We did talk to the respective attorneys, and they have given their consent for the virtual meeting.
I thank you, Mr. Want. For those, if you didn't understand that, one of the, we run two monthly meetings. One is live here in the courtroom. That was usually the larger applications. And we have a second one, which we still do virtually on Zoom, and that is normally what would be considered homeowner's issues, that they have minor variances that they need to handle. So that meeting, however, on twelve fifteen, December fifteenth, is going to be virtual. I thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll proceed on with item three, its resolutions. This is where Mr. Dasty gets the talk. We're going to call him in order forty-one dash twenty-twenty-one Z. Olivia Smith, for C variance, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was trying to put the resolutions in the correct order that they are on the agenda. But the resolution for Olivia Smith, it's a resolution granting bulk variance relief pursuant to NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy C to erect a ten-foot fence around a basketball court in the side yard of the property. Ms. Smith appeared before the board at the October twenty twenty twenty, excuse me, the October twenty twenty twenty-two meeting to provide testimony in support of the application. There is a six-foot requirement in height requirements, whereas ten feet is proposed. The applicant provided testimony in support of the application that granting the variances can occur without a substantial detriment to the public good and will not impair the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and the benefits derived outweigh any detriment. So that is the memorializing resolution before you for Olivia Smith, application forty-one dash twenty-twenty-one Z for C variance relief for nine ante drive.
Thank you. Mr. Dasty, as a point of order, can we vote with four people?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, board members, you've heard the resolution. Has read someone in favor of memorializing by?
Motion to approve. Connor?
Second, Stoner.
Mr. Stoner, seconds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Resolution's adopted. Fifteen dash twenty-twenty-two Z, South Old Bridge Volunteer Fire Company, Inc., major preliminary final site plan with C and D variance. Mr. Dasty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application for C and D variance relief for the South Old Bridge Volunteer Fire Company for a property known as block one zero, excuse me, one eight zero eight one, lots two hundred, two hundred and one, two hundred and two, two hundred and three, two hundred and four, and two hundred and five, for the applicant proposed to expand the existing firehouse building order to provide additional room for more modern equipment and larger fire apparatuses. The applicant provided unrefuted testimony in support of the D, C, and D variance relief, that the granting of the variances can occur without a substantial detriment to the public good and do not impair the zone plan or zoning ordinances specifically. There was a floor area ratio variance that was granted, where the requirement is zero point three zero is the ratio, and zero point three four is the proposed and the approved ratio. Additionally, the maximum building height was two stories or thirty feet. The proposed and granted was two stories and thirty-seven feet. The board found these were de minimis, and certainly the general welfare served by providing the improved area and space for its fire department. With regard to the bulk variances, there was a loading space requirement of one, of one space, and there was no existing and no proposed, so it was just confirming an existing condition. With regard to the location of the trash receptacle on the property, the requirement is that it's within the rear or side yard. The granted was to put it in the front yard. And the firefighter monument locations, the requirement in the ordinance is that it remain in the rear or side yard, and it is currently in the front yard and is going to remain in the front yard. And also, the last bulk variance was with regard to the side yard setback for the monument to the firefighters, the firemen, excuse me. Twenty-five feet is required, and the existing and proposed condition would be less than twenty-five feet. So once again, the board found at the last hearing that the proofs provided substantially outweigh any detriment, and the memorializing resolution before you is confirming the variance relief at the last, at the October seventeen twenty-twenty-two board hearing. And although this is a D variance, Mr. Chairman, it's already been granted, so this is just a memorializing the action taken, so four votes or two votes are enough.
Thank you, Mr. Dasty. For your counsel, board members, you've heard the resolution. Someone move it for adoption, please.
I'll move it. Stoner?
Stoner moved it. Is there a second?
Chevalier, a second.
Chevalier, seconds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Thirty-four dash twenty-twenty-two Z, Eugene Godowski, C variance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Godowski, this matter was heard at the October twenty twenty twenty-two board hearing. It's for bulk variance relief for property known as fifty-seven Washington Avenue, block four thousand point two five, lot eleven, whereas the applicant proposed to install a wooden deck and place a, I'm sorry, he had installed a wooden deck, was now looking to convert it to a sunroom. The bulk variance is required with regard to side yard setback. Ten feet is required, nine point five feet is proposed and was granted. The rear side yard setback was twenty-five feet, sixteen point five feet was proposed and granted. The board found after the proofs and testimony submitted that the granting of the variances resulted as the hardship of the property, C variance, the way the property is laid out and delineated, and the granting of the variances can occur without a substantial detriment to the public good, the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and that was approved at the October twenty twenty twenty-two board hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Dasty. Board members, you've heard it. Someone move it for adoption.
I'll move it, Stoner.
Stoner is their second.
Connor, I'll second.
Connor, seconds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes.
Moving on, Mr. Chairman, this is application thirty-six dash twenty-twenty-two Z, excuse me, yes, Harris, Mrs. Harris, this is regard to thirty-two Oakland Road, block one three three zero five, lot eight, bulk variance application that was granted on October twenty twenty twenty-two. In this application, the applicant sought relief with regard to the minimum rear yard setback, whereas twenty-five feet is required, twenty-one point five feet was the proposed and granted. This applicant wanted to install a sunroom in the rear of the property to better utilize her property and storage for her family and furniture. The board found that the, once again, the variances could be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good and would not impair the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and hardship existed in necessitating the granting of the variance for the de minimis couple of feet from the side yard. So the resolution memorializes the findings of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Dasty. Members, someone move it for adoption, please.
Motion to approve. Connor?
Second, Stoner.
Move the second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Dasty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is another C variance. This is Michael Ambrosio. This is for property one oh four McCormick Avenue, block twenty-two zero zero one point one four, lot thirty-two. This is another C variance application that was heard on October twenty twenty twenty-two. The applicant was before the board to install a paver patio and fire pit in the rear yard of the property as a result of the topography and the narrow, excuse me, the narrowness of the lot. There are bulk variance relief necessary. There is a, there is a landscape area ratio where point three zero was required, point seven five was proposed, and a rear setback variance of three feet required, one foot proposed. The board found that as a result of the uniqueness of the lot, a hardship exists, and the granting of the variance was necessary after submitting all the proofs, and that the granting of the variance would not be inconsistent with the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and the positive criteria met, in that it would not be a detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Dasty, for the board. That's, the record's thirty-eight dash twenty-twenty-two Z. You've heard it. So we'll move it for adoption.
I'll move it, Stoner.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
I'll second. Connor?
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
We're almost there, Mr. Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen. So this is application forty-one dash twenty-twenty-two Z. This is the Lawrence Harbor Board of Fire Commissioners that were before the board on October seventeen twenty twenty-two. This is with regard to twenty Lawrence Parkway, block three point eleven, lot three. The, the fire commissioners were before the board, seeking bulk variance relief with regard to a sign. Setback of the sign, it's the existing sign that was going to be revised to include an LED illuminator. The setback for the LED sign, twenty feet is required, fifteen point four nine feet from the edge of the pavement, from the edge of the pavement was proposed and existing. The, the fire commissions were receiving a grant from FEMA, as I recall, and as a result, they had to upgrade the sign to an LED sign. There are numerous provisions that were set forth as conditions of approval, that the sign would have, that, let me find my notes there, that the proposed LED sign would confirm the plans submitted in the application, that the text of the sign would not change more frequently than thirty-second intervals, that the message center on the sign will not flash, scroll, crawl, blink, or dazzle. There will be no commercial advertising on the sign. The message board, which is double-sided, will have the same message appearing on both sides at the same time. The sign will, the sign will include important public messages, including but not limited to amber alerts, silver alerts, general public service announcements at the request, at the request of the township. And as a condition to the FEMA grant, seventy-five percent of the sign has to be devoted to membership announcements, membership drives, trying to get more people involved in the fire department. So, once again, the board found that the granting of the variances was necessary, would not be a detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, that the positive criteria was met, and certainly it's going to help the local community, the general welfare, in trying to better advertise the membership of the fire department. So that's the resolution you have.
Thank you, Mr. Dasty. Board members, this is for the Lawrence Harbor Board of Fire Commissioners. Want to move this for adoption?
Motion to approve. Connor?
Your second.
Second, Stoner.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. We have reached the eighteenth hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this, excuse me, this is application forty-five dash twenty-twenty-two Z. This is, the applicant was Leslie White, for thirty-four Pleasant Valley Road, block twenty thousand, lot thirteen. Again, another C variance that was heard on October twenty twenty twenty-two. The applicant sought bulk variance relief to install a fifteen-foot gazebo in the rear yard of the property. The applicant provided testimony in support of the application. The sought variance relief was with regard to the accessory building height, fifteen feet is required, eighteen feet was proposed. The board found that was de minimis in nature, that the applicant provided sufficient proofs that a hardship exists, and that the granting of the variance was necessary and appropriate.
Board members, you've heard it. Someone want to move for adoption?
I'll move it, Stoner.
Mr. Stoner, is there a second?
Connor, I'll second.
Connor, seconds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Thank you, sir. And thank you, Mr. Dasty. Need a little?
I'm going to have, I'll have, I'll have some more coffee, Mr. Chairman.
We've moved to our application phase of the evening, and that will be only one, as I previously announced. I'll pull that into the record right now, sixty-six dash twenty-twenty-Z, Medina Majid. This is block thirty-two thirty, lot thirty-nine point eleven, and thirty-nine point twelve, location five two four Morris Town Road, for House of Worship. James Stahl, representing the applicant, Mr. Stahl.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Natalie, I assume you have jurisdiction, you can see the applicant's application.
So you just need to turn on the microphone.
Thank you. Jim Stahl, as the chairman indicated, S-T-A-H-L. My firm is Boersch Golden Foley, Vignola Hyman Stahl, of which Peter Lanford, whose name you may see, is my partner, but he, he enjoys Florida sometimes too much, so I'm the northern guy. Natalie, we have jurisdiction. You've received our affidavit of publication.
Yes, sir.
Service. Thank you very much. I just wanted to reiterate what council had said. I do not expect, under any scenario, a decision tonight, because there's just too much, but we want to get started. So I have no objection to four members reviewing the application, and then at the next meeting, I would assume that the appropriate individuals will read the transcript and/or watch the movie and sign a certification, and then we'll have enough individuals to vote on it, assuming we get past a second meeting. I have spoken with the planner, and FEMA has volunteered after this meeting, not tonight, to meet with my team at a TAC meeting, just to go over what we have brought to you tonight, what's in her report, to expedite the second hearing. If we finish the three tonight, who's my applicant's rep, my engineer, and my architect, we would propose to bring in a traffic engineer, probably Betsy Dolan, and a planner. My professionals are efficient and don't waste a lot of time, and I don't like to waste the board's time. I pride myself on moving quickly but efficiently, and to that end, sometimes I tend to lead a little bit, and I hope council, he can shut me down if he thinks it's too much, but I try and move it, except for my professionals, who I give them ladder, a wide berth unless I have to interrupt to improve something, if you will. So with that all having been said, the board knows what this is. It's an application for a mosque, fifty-two, I'll get this done, fifty-two thousand square feet with the. Watch again, we just have a technical difficulty with it.
Now we're back. Hello? There we go. Sorry about that, sir.
Okay. Oh, that's good. I don't, I wasn't ready to dance tonight. As I've, I forget where I was. Oh, yes, it's fifty-two thousand square feet, single building with accessory uses that properly the planner has said that we need to identify and give more information. There's also a house, a single-family resident that will, residents that will be renovated and proposed to be used for the iman, the assistant iman, and a maintenance employee. I recognize that that use as the maintenance employee may indicate a further variance. We'll, we'll talk about that later. It is not intended, and we will accept, of course, as a condition of a resolution, that no rental will be made of the units. They are purely for a parsonage, as indicated in the ordinance, and if allowed, for a maintenance superintendent to be on site. I will now call Mr. Ahmed. Mr. Ahmed, where are you? Why don't you take that microphone and make it operable? You might as well stand, you can get sworn in. Got it?
Button's on the bottom, I think.
Bottom button, it should be on the bottom. Down here?
There you go, yeah.
We need Adnan, an engineer. Stand up, my friend. Raise your right hand.
Sir, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to testify truth in this matter before the board? Do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully in this matter before the board?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Can we have your name?
Tanvir Spall. Tanvir Ahmed Spall.
Say it one more time.
Tanvir Ahmed Spall.
Seven, those names.
S-P-A-L-L.
S-P-A.
L-L.
L-L.
Yeah.
Can you spell?
First name? T-A-N-V-I-R, and the middle nation is Ahmed, A-H-M-E-D.
Have a seat. Ahmed, I'm going to call you Ahmed, which is your name, and you enjoy that. I'm going to ask certain questions, as I told you, we keep the questions as short as possible. I also am going to ask the board, be as tough as you, as you want. I mean, I, we want to field as many questions as you feel are appropriate when you hear this testimony, because when we come back, we want to resolve any issues that you may have, and of course, that FEMA has, so, you know, we can, we can take the heat if it's necessary.
Mr. Stahl, I would just say the normal protocol is the board is, we would listen to your witness testify. I would then go for questions to our professionals, and then to our panel.
That's exactly, that's how.
Try and keep the continuity.
That's how I thought. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, Ahmed, you, what is your capacity with the mosque?
Maximum two hundred to two hundred.
No, listen to my questions. What is your, what is your position?
Oh, I'm a construction chairperson.
And you have the authority to be here tonight and to answer my questions?
Yes.
And have you been involved, by the way, in the construction of other mosques?
Yes.
As a construction consultant or a construction member?
Yeah, construction consultant.
And you're, you're familiar with the operations of the mosque, is that correct?
Yes.
And the mosque's name, for the record, is?
Medina Masjid.
Is this a part of a national, are you an affiliate of a national or international religious group?
National, yes.
All right, and what is a national affiliation?
Affiliation with all the other religion groups.
All right, does this mosque have a certain sect to which they're related to?
Yeah, it's a Muslim masjid, Muslim house of worship.
Now, the house of worship itself, strike that. The total building is about fifty-two thousand eight hundred square feet, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, that's one unit, is that correct?
Yes.
And then there's a single-family residence, which is there, which is going to be renovated, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, staying with the single, strike that, staying with the fifty-two thousand square foot facility, that is one unit, one big unit, is that correct?
Yes.
And within that unit, you are going to have a, a house of worship or a prayer area of approximately thirty-four thousand five hundred, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, that prayer area, is that also going to be multipurpose, or is that a different area in the mosque?
It's the same building, but the different hall, the multipurpose area.
So the prayer area, the thirty-four thousand five hundred is purely for prayer, is that correct? If you don't know, just tell me, and then Adnan will.
It, no, it's, I don't, I'm not sure. The hall is thirty-four thousand.
When you say the hall, that's the entire house of worship. I got it now. How much of that thirty-four thousand will be devoted to prayer area?
It's a four thousand square foot, the prayer area.
So four thousand square feet of the thirty-four thousand is for prayer?
Yes.
Is that correct? And I want to bring up some numbers in a minute. The other thirty thousand of the house of worship, what is that dedicated to?
It's a multipurpose hall and swimming pool, also a basketball court.
I didn't get what he said. I'm sorry. The other thirty, he said the other.
No, we're, I'm having some, stay with me, because I'm looking at numbers, and I want to make sure they're right. I can always have Adnan do it. The total house of worship building is fifty-two thousand eight hundred square feet?
Yes.
Okay. In that house of worship, in that building, you have thirty-four thousand five hundred for the house of worship, is that correct?
For a house of worship, we call only the prayer hall area. So that's a four thousand square foot.
Of the, so four, take four thousand out of the thirty-four thousand, I'm not talking about the athletic facility.
Yeah.
What is the other thirty thousand square feet used for?
It's one community hall, also two apartments over there, and classroom.
All right. The classrooms are going to be used for Sunday school, is that correct?
Yes.
No other days of the week, is that correct?
Yes.
And when, when your congregants come, the same children who would go to prayer will spend time in the Sunday school, is that correct?
Yes.
How long is Sunday school? How many hours?
From ten thirty to one P.M.
And that's every Sunday?
Every Sunday, yes.
Now, do you also have the multipurpose area, is that correct?
Yes.
In that multipurpose area, that's like a community meeting room, is that correct?
It's when they have a program, so they also eat over there in the community, at the multipurpose room.
When you say they eat, you have, you have a small kitchen, is that correct?
Yes.
Not a commercial kitchen, but a small kitchen, is that correct?
Yes.
And you have heating tables or warming tables, is that correct?
Yes.
So you would cater if you ever serve food, am I correct?
Yes.
And the most times that you would cater would be social events and including Ramadan And the most times that you would cater would be social events and including Ramadan, because of the fast in the day and then eating at night, is that correct?
Yes.
And so, now I've covered the four thousand prayer area, the thirty thousand multipurpose, which might be meetings or, or social events, is that correct?
Yes.
And I've covered the thirty-four thousand. The school is seventeen hundred and forty-four square feet, is that correct?
Yes.
And that again is for the Sunday school?
Yes.
And I'll have Adnan and the architect confirm some of these dimensions. Now, the athletic facility is approximately fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-two square feet, is that correct?
Yes.
That's a pool?
Yes.
Basketball court?
Yeah.
What else?
Nothing else is there.
Now, that, that facility is not rented out or used by anyone other than the congregation, is that correct?
Yes.
And what is the contemplated, how many days or nights is it used, for what amount of hours?
Most of the time is only on the weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and hours in the morning, ten to one, and evening, seven to nine.
And that's as to the athletic facilities, is that correct?
Yes.
And then, even though you had said it, all right, and that's about the fourteen thousand square feet, and again, with the help of the board, we'll get to that with Mr., with our architect and engineer. Now, you said that there was the residences. Are the residences in this building or in the single-family residence?
No, we have a two apartment in the same big building, one for the second imam and one for the caretaker.
All right. So, who's going to live in the house?
The second, the first imam, the.
All right, so, now you've helped me. The, the single-family residence will be used only for the imam, is that correct?
Yes.
And then the two apartments in the building, the major building, we'll call it, is going to be the caretaker and the, the junior or second imam, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, now let's get to some numbers here, if you can. Assuming, when we opened up this building, when you constructed it, what is your congregation? What's the number that are in your congregation? Not families, but what do you figure the total congregation is, husband, wife, and children?
The biggest crowd come only on Friday, it's maximum from two hundred to two hundred fifty.
All right. I'll try it this way. The, your prayer services in the Muslim religion are five times a day, is that correct?
Yes.
With the largest population being in the evening service, is that correct?
Yes.
And the largest population on a weekly basis is Friday afternoon, is that correct?
Yes.
Give me the times for the benefit of the board of the five services during the week.
The first is before the sunrise, the second is one P.M., the third is about four to five P.M., and fourth is after sunset, and fifth is about eight P.M.
And does that include Saturdays and Sundays?
Yes.
All right, and what is the, based on your experience of the other mosques that you have been involved in or been a member of, what is the average population per service?
About fifteen to twenty people.
And how long is each service?
Ten to fifteen minutes.
Except for the afternoon, is that a longer service?
Yeah, the longest service is Friday afternoon, from twelve-thirty to one-thirty P.M.
All right, so the Friday afternoon is about an hour?
Yes.
Otherwise, it could be ten minutes to half an hour?
Maximum ten to fifteen minutes.
And for those, it's about twenty individuals, is that correct?
Yes.
So, I've got twenty individuals, five times a day, and then on the afternoon, maybe a little bit more, Friday afternoon, how many will I have in that one-hour service?
Maximum two hundred to two hundred fifty.
So, I'd have two hundred to two hundred and fifty maximum on a Friday afternoon, is that correct?
Yes.
And now I have the, the other, how many festivals do you have a year?
Uh, two festivals, two days.
Does that include Ramadan?
No, Ramadan is for the whole month.
All right, so, the two festivals are what?
It's our Eid, right after the Ramadan, one, and one after Ramadan, like two and a half month after that.
Is that, is that a one-day festival, a week festival?
It's a one-day festival.
And how many services are there for that one-day festival?
Two services, and that's in the mornings.
How many people come to each service?
Same, two hundred, two hundred fifty.
Per service?
Per service.
So, five hundred for the day?
Yes.
All right, and with regard, and that's two times a year, is that correct?
Yes.
And with regard to Ramadan, that's a, that's a monthly celebration, is that correct?
Yes.
And with regard to Ramadan, what is the average number of congregants that come during the day?
During the day, the same amount, fifteen to twenty people.
And how about the evening service, where you break the fast?
Uh, when we break the fast, that time same, fifteen to twenty, but at nighttime, the eight P.M., about seventy-five to hundred people comes.
Just, and just so we understand, Ramadan, that evening services would be maximum of seventy-five to a hundred, the board has an idea, otherwise it's twenty, fifteen to twenty. On the two festival days, it can be as much as two hundred, five hundred a day, broken down, two hundred and fifty per service, is that correct?
Yes.
And how long is a service for the two festival days?
It's half an hour each service.
And when you do Ramadan, those are the same ten- or fifteen-minute services, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, let's get back, please, to, uh, the school is Sunday school only, is that correct?
Yes.
How many kids you have in the Sunday school?
Fifty to seventy-five.
Fifty to seventy-five, and the parents will bring them, do the parents bring them the same time they come to prayer, and then they wait for the kids? Do they drop off the kids and come back? What is the, the procedure?
They drop off the kids, and then they come back. After the prayer, some parents, they join it, and some, they pick up right after the prayer.
And with regard to the pool, how many people do you think kids or adults will be in the pool facilities?
It's not more than two, twenty kids at a time.
And why do you say not more than twenty kids?
Because it's depend how many lifeguards going to be there, so, how many we can cater at a time, so we decided we're not going to be, have more than twenty kids at a time.
And you can control that, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, now, the board's going to, the board, if I don't ask, the board's going to ask, are we going to have any major social events during the year that might cause intense traffic and parking? Are there any plans for those?
No.
And you understand that if you were going to have those, those events, you would have to consult with the police department to make sure you have, go parking and crowd control and proper parking provisions, am I correct?
Yes.
But right now, you don't have any plans of bazaars or, or major celebrations of hundreds of people, am I correct?
Yes.
All right, now, let me just, and I understand the board's going to ask you probably some questions to tighten up some of those numbers. The single-family dwelling, there's going to be a kitchen, it's going to be a regular house, is that correct?
Yes.
Does the imam cook, or does you have someone, do you have someone that cooks for the imam?
His wife going to cook for him.
Okay. So, it'll be a regular kitchen?
Yes.
Okay. And the kitchen that we're going to have in the, the major building will just be a small kitchen, not commercial, is that correct?
Yes.
And as I said, there'll be warming tables, am I correct?
Yes.
With regard to operations, is there anything that I have omitted that you believe is important?
No.
All right, because now we're going, we're going to get the questions, all right. That's all I have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Stoll. Mr. What?
I do not have any questions at this time.
Ms. Bureau?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Ask her.
No, none at this time.
Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, I, I.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, counsel. These, all these witnesses will be again here at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
I mean, you and I have been through it, we know. They'll be here, so, to the extent the other board members have questions, or any of you have questions, they're available.
They'll be available for, for questions.
Absolutely.
And, and I assume that would be the case, counsel.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. The only question I had, just because we're talking about operational items, what about access to the mosque? I, I know you talked about, you know, the five prayer groups, but what about just general access, that people would come and go, or open and close?
With regard, with regard to the, the mosque, the major building, what is the, what is the, X, one, what is the security being afforded to the building? Who can enter? When is it going to be open? How does one get in? What are we doing about the services? How are you controlling access into the building?
That's why we have a caretaker twenty-four hour over there, so he opens the mosque like ten or fifteen minutes before the services.
All right, I won't have more access from the architect and the engineer.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ahmed, you're a official of the national organization?
Yes.
So, are you speaking as, not, as a, of course, you don't carry any credentials in building, correct? He's not a, he's not a, a testifying as an engineer, he's, he's just speculating on what he knows.
Right, I'm submitting him as a lay witness in terms of what the operations will be, so he's not speculating, he's basing it, well, are you basing your numbers and information based upon your experience in attending mosques?
Yes.
And including other mosques in this, in Old Bridge?
Yes.
Have you found them to be the same? How many projects have you done, sir?
I done, in New Jersey, like five, and five in Pennsylvania.
And you found them all to be similar if they were dealing with similar size spaces?
Yeah, yes, I'm a member of Islamic Center of Old Bridge last twenty years.
All right, thank you.
One, one, since, one question. In comparing the mosques that you've been involved in, is this on the larger size, the smaller size, the average size?
The larger and smaller both.
How can it be both?
This one, he's being, this one, in comparison to the other five, bigger or smaller?
Uh, this is medium.
Medium, okay.
Yeah.
Right in the middle.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stoll. Board members on my left?
No.
Anyone? Go ahead, Mr. Stoll.
Uh, can I ask one question?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
One quick question. So, since you said that you have been involved in other similar facilities, do you know what's the average size of the, or the acreage of the properties on which these are located? Like, for example, this one is on a roughly five-acre parcel, four point nine one, to be precise, but the other facilities that you have worked with in Jersey, would you by any chance know how big?
Yes, two acres and even smaller that.
Same-sized building, or for a smaller building?
The, the acreage is two acre in Edison, but the building is bigger than that, the prayer hall.
Let me try. I got, I have fifty-two thousand square feet total, forgetting the prayer area. That building, do you have other buildings of similar size that you've been involved
No, they are, the acreage, they are smaller.
The acreage is smaller?
Yeah.
Was a building smaller too?
Yes.
So, do you feel that, I don't want to, so, other sites have been smaller buildings and smaller acreage?
Yeah.
And bless you. All right.
Can I rephrase the question? For a facility this size, if, for example, you did five of them, a facility that was roughly fifty thousand square feet, do you know what was the acreage for those parcels?
No, I don't know.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Stoll, maybe you could help the board. He is speaking as a person who has experience in doing this. Does he hold a certain position within the organization, that he has the authority that what he says is actually going to be what happens?
Yes.
I mean, is there, and, and other witnesses tonight that may be a, I don't know about the imam, but someone who is the, perhaps the president of the organization, or that organization, or whatever title may be used?
Well, he's, he is on the construction committee of this mosque, a member of this mosque, and what other positions?
I also a board member of this.
He is a board member?
Yes.
Okay, and what position does he hold on the board? Would be a secretary, is, is there named positions?
There is a position, president, vice president, secretary, and then the board members.
So, you're one of the board members under the president?
One of the board members, yes.
Will any of those officers, and I'm assuming that they probably hold title in, in the corporation, as it were, or even though it's religious, would they be testifying?
I had, I had not planned on it, but if it's something that the board would be interested in, it's an easy fix.
Let's see, but would that be, would that?
Oh, yeah.
Someone who actually has absolute authority?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, our position is he, he was given authorization by the board, but if the board wants the president or vice president, for me, it's, it's not a problem.
Well, we'll see, and we'll, we'll, I'll confer with, with the officials as well. I don't know what they might want. We'll see what the other board members want. So, board members, no questions, right? We can move on to the next witness?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Prescott.
Came up in my notes. Regarding the sports facility, I think you said it's typically used Friday, Saturday, Sunday, from ten A.M. to one P.M., and then seven to nine P.M.? Is it, is it closed between those time periods?
Yes.
And then is it closed other days of the week, or is it still open and functioning at other places?
It will close.
It'll be closed?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm assuming that's because you have to have a lifeguard there, right?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Stoll.
Thank you, sir. Do you, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully in this matter before the board?
I do.
And can we have your name, sir, please?
Adnan Khan, K.H.A.N. A W Z Engineering, I'm the engineer of record.
You just haven't put his credentials on the record. You just haven't put his credentials on the record, for those watching at home.
Yeah, I have testified in front of this board.
I know you have, sir.
I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, master's in construction management from N.G.I.T., professional engineer in foresters, including New Jersey, testified in front of hundreds of boards, including Superior Court and Federal Court.
And I recognize you personally, sir, I just wanted those who may be watching to understand who's, who's talking and what.
It is, that is correct.
We accept his credentials and his expertise.
Can I just clarify a few things based on the previous testimony?
Well, just, I'm going to ask you one more question, then I'll let, you know I'll let you go. You were engaged by the applicant to provide the engineering, professional engineering services for the site, is that correct?
Yes.
And based upon the information you obtained from the board and the principals of this, of the mosque, you followed the directions and you created this, is that correct? All right, I'm, you'll clarify things, and then you know what I do, I want you to do is to advise the board, A, present conditions, what's out there, and then B, I want you to go through the proposed project. You might as well testify as the parking, even though we have to give some more information to staff.
Okay. Just like, as I mentioned, like, I just want to see, like, I think Mr. Ahmed is a board member, and he's also in the construction committee of this building. Are we catching him on a microphone? Okay. So, yeah, I have numerous meetings with them and the other board members as far as the, when we were designing this project. And I'll answer your question too later on about thing, but I'm just going to quickly go over the project, the way, like, I.
Interrupt you.
You don't promise.
I know.
See, you don't. Don't do that.
How many mosques have you been involved as a professional engineer in state of New Jersey?
Over thirteen, fourteen, I believe.
Excellent.
So, the way the operation of the mosque works, based on my understanding and based of my practicing, is, again, it's a five daily prayers before sunrise, which is usually, like, based on my experience of big and small mosque, you will see mostly between five to ten people. Diehard people only shows up, especially in winter time, early in the morning. So, and then the afternoon prayer service is around noon time, little afternoon. Evening service, or late day service is late afternoon, then the evening service at sunset, and then the night service. So, those are the five services. On a regular basis, from Monday through, actually, seven days a week, usually, the highest attended services is either the evening or late night, because during the weekdays, people are working, so they don't show up. So, usually, like, people, like, around the evening prayer, actually, or, or the nighttime prayer, is where you see probably twenty-five to thirty people. So, that's the normal system, how the mosque works. Friday afternoon is the major peak congregational service, where it's obligatory for men to[1688.91] where it's obligatory for men to attend congregation prayers at the mosque. And that's where you see will be our peak demand, even our traffic demand will be the maximum in Friday afternoon, which runs somewhere from twelve-thirty to, I would say, one-thirty or two o'clock. And again, just to remind you, like, again, these timings of the prayers, they shift because they follow the lunar calendar. So, in winter time, the prayer services are very close. In winter and summertime, it's long, like, during, because everything based on the sun and sunrise and sunset. So, Friday afternoon, no matter what, is between twelve-thirty to, I would say, one-thirty, two o'clock. And that is the peak, where you will see, like, as Mr. Ahmed testified, around two hundred and fifty people at a given time. The other, like, the two major high holidays, as he mentioned, is the Eid days, that is also, but those services are only morning prayers from eight to ten. If there are multiple services, they will happen between those, that time, and after ten o'clock, everybody goes their home and celebrate. So, it's not like a full time that they will be staying at the mosque from morning to evening. So, those are the general, how the mosque system works. As far as the Sunday school, Sunday school works, as he mentioned, from one, uh, sorry, from ten o'clock to one o'clock. Usually, ten o'clock, parents come in, they drop their kids. There are certain other functions that are happening on Sunday for adults, like adults' religious classes, if that is, or any seminars or things like that. Some parents opt to stay, some parents just drop the kids and leave. When they come around one, one-thirty to pick up the kids, some, again, some p, some parents pick up the kids right from the school. Some parents come in and join the afternoon service and do the prayer services. After their prayer services, everything is closed off, uh, for, for, for certain duration. As far as the, uh, community center and communal services that he mentioned, the, the prime during the average day in a year is when, during Sunday school period, when the kids are there, they will be using, like, a swimming pool or gymnasium or basketball court. Or during the Friday, when there are evening services, kids come, uh, and play basketball, and that is for that duration. So, that is how that, that usually works. In Ramadan is another exception, where evening, uh, night per services had to be attended by, I mean, it's preferred that it should be a congregational prayer, uh, every day on a thirty day, thirty days consecutive during Ramadan. And usually, that's where you see a little bit more people, because the holy month, lot more people shows up for the nighttime services, and usually that runs from seventy-five to eighty. During that time, also, they bring their kids and the families. So, usually the kids, and that service lasts for about hour, hour and a half. So, usually the kids, they don't hang around for hour and a half to do the prayers. So, after fifteen, twenty minutes, they go off, play basketball or whatever. So, they are using the community center. Also, during Ramadan, there, there are these fast-breaking, uh, I would say, functions or that is arranged by the mosque, where people come break the fast, and they commingle and that's discussion before the prayer service start, and that's where they will be hanging in the community center. So, the idea of this whole thing that I laid out is not just tell, I mean, just to give you an idea of what the religion practices, but also how the facility will be operating. So, the, everything operates in the facility around the prayer services or Sunday school during the Sunday. So, the people who are coming to attend the prayer services and their families, they are the ones who are at the facility any given time. There is no outside, there's no, no, someone can walk in and just go to the basketball court or use the swimming pool. So, it's basically a community-based, and the, and that's why, like, the way we did the parking, and I'm going to go over that once I go over my plans, is, uh, I, as for the requirements, there are requirements that each user should generate, generate its own requirement for the parking. But the way now, uh, any given mosque works is that everything revolves around the prayer. So, whatever is the capacity of the prayer services or prayer service hall, that's how, or in this case, the residences and the school, that's how we calculated the parking, and that's what is needed, uh, as far as the parking for this particular facility. So, this is just a quick clarifications.
Thank you very much, Mr. Khan. It is a clarification, and, and I think it makes it a little clearer, probably, for those watching, uh, those here in the audience, and certainly for the board members to understand that. And, and I'm not taking any, anything away from the previous testimony, but, uh, I, I appreciate the clarity that you've-
You're welcome.
-given to the board. Thank you. Mr. Stoll.
Okay, so, so what I'm going to go through is, and I believe, uh, you have the plans up on the screen as well. The property is located in Economic Development Opportunity District, uh, which is, uh, five twenty-four Morris Town Road. It is, uh, conditional use, uh, as a house of worship, is a permitted use, and that's what we are applying for. We meet most of the requirements of the bulk ordinance, except for one of the requirement where in, uh, I think it's an ordinance, is maximum front yard. So, the maximum front yard is basically that, uh, the way I interpret the ordinance is that allows you the, where how far back you can put the principal building on the facility. In our case, we are exceeding that. The requirement is fifty feet, we are about sixty-four. Let me just give you the actual number. Actually, we, uh, front yard is, we are actually hundred and four point five four feet. So, we are doubling that, uh, front yard, so that creates a variance as part of the bulk. And the reason for that is that we have an existing house, and actually, I'm going to flip over to sheet two, which is our site plan.
Just for the record. I got it. Just for the record, the efficiency of the staff here, as you are flipping the page, is also shown on the computer, on the screens above us, so that the board and the public are also looking at exactly what you're testifying to. This set of plans that you're testifying to is exactly the same set that has been provided to the professional planning staff and the board, is that correct?
That is correct.
Uh, if there's to be anything else that was not provided within time, you must tell us so that the board knows.
No, I think this is the plan, and again, uh, when we submitted the plans, it, uh, we also submitted some reports as required. So, everything is part, was part of the package.
And, and just for clarification, that's sheet two of the site plan, is that correct?
Sheet C dash O two, titled Site Development Plan. And the date on the plan, which is the same as the submission, is January sixth, twenty twenty-two.
And are, uh, Mr. Stoll, or you want to mark these as exhibits? They were submitted as part of the application, so it really, you don't necessarily have to, but-
I, I don't usually, unless there's something new, I mean, they're in the package, so they would be a normal exhibit. I don't want to waste.
Yeah, just make sure, I, as you, the, as the, as Mr. Khan turns the pages, just do exactly what you just said, just read the sheet number and date submitted. Thank you, sir.
I'm just going to go over the existing condition, what exists on the site. Uh, the site is very narrow, and, uh, and the narrow in the sense, like, it meets the front, uh, frontage requirements, but it extends towards the north, it extends, it's a deep lot, in other words. Uh, around the one-third section to the northern side of the lot, we have, uh, wetlands, we have, uh, some open stream there. So, then we did L O I for this project, and we got a determination from D E P. So, these wetlands are protected wetlands with a fifty-foot buffer. So, that's what the whole idea was, to make sure, like, when we develop something, we are not encroaching into the wetlands or wetlands buffer. Uh, the only structure on the property located is currently is this existing dwelling. When we prepared these plans originally, uh, the, the process was to add, renovate the house and add an addition to the house. Uh, and of course, the building of the mosque structure. During the course from the original plan to at present, what happened is, I believe, the construction started on the house, and the, I mean, the applicant demolished the existing house completely. Only thing left is the foundation. So, the idea still is that, that we're going to build on the existing foundation and propose the addition as shown on the plan. So, the size of the house is not going to change than what's shown on the plan. Of course, it's not what's currently exist, but it will be the same, utilizing the same footprint and adding, uh, more to it. Uh, so, and, and then the slopes, the way the property is, like, it slopes from south to north, and it's pretty steep. Uh, I would say it's at least hundred and thirty, hundred and forty feet drop from the front along Morris Town Road to the rear of the property. So, it's very steep and challenging, uh, site. So, the idea here is, again, as we are trying, is like to have a facility that serves the community needs, and that's the reason for its size, like, as, uh, as Mr. Ahmed also testified, is we have, we want to have adequate prayer area, we have to have adequate facilities, modern facilities for the kids and the families who are attending the site. Uh, that's why we are proposing basketball court and, uh, swimming pool. Most of the mosques that I have involved in, like, except for few, usually you don't find these facilities, the basketballs and swimming pools on the, on the premises. But they have hard time, like, as far as meeting up their demand for the families that looking. So, I think in this particular, uh, place, since we have a bigger lot, I think there was a, there is a potential of proposing these amenities, so I think that's one of the, uh, triggering factor that the applicant is trying to achieve by providing those services to the community. Uh, the way we organize is, again, we have, like, a complete circulation along the property, the entrance of the property, again, both the entrance, there are two entrances, each is one-way. The eastern side or driveway is, uh, ingress, which allows the traffic to come in from Morris Town Road, and they can travel around, and the western driveway is the egress, uh, from the facility. So, it's a one-way circulation. However, we have two-way circulation in between where we have parking spaces, uh, so that, and as required also, we are, uh, for the requirements of the engineering standards, that for ninety-degree parking spaces, you need to provide twenty-four backup area, and you have to have two-way circulation. So, that's why we are taking advantage of two-way circulation and the one-way driveway along the property perimeter. We also have a combination of, like, some angle parking and, as I mentioned, ninety-degree parking, uh, on the side, and that is to facilitate the parking in addition to the pattern of the traffic circulation on the property. We, a- as I mentioned, uh, the parking analysis that we did was based on the prayer area, which is four thousand, approximately four thousand two hundred square feet. And, uh, it's, uh, either one space for, uh, sorry, one, uh, space for, uh, let me just read it exactly. Uh, one per three seats or one per eleven square feet. So, that generates, uh, a parking plus the residence parking. So, overall, the requirement comes up to be hundred and thirty-four, and based on the current plan, we are showing hundred and fifty-five parking spaces on the site. However, we just received the report today from the Planning and Engineering Department, and their count on the parking is much higher. They are proposing four hundred and nineteen, based, four hundred and nineteen spaces, and that is based on individual use of each square footage, uh, individual square footage for different uses that are, uh, shown or that are proposed on this facility. And that's the reason I explained in my opening, is like how the system, where everything works around the prayer area. So, even though the requirement might be four nineteen, but based on the prayer services and based on the testimony of Mr. Ahmed, who's really involved with this facility, uh, I think, in my opinion, I think hundred and fifty-five spaces is more than adequate for this particular use and this particular facility. And also, I think, uh, and Mr. Ahmed can confirm that, and I was under the impression that if at some point parking becomes an issue, the mosque administration is willing to segregate and make two services for Friday afternoon instead of one. So, in other words, they will split the services so that the parking demand can still be met onsite rather than having an issue. So, that's something I think they are open, but he can confirm that.
While you took a breath, I just want to confirm a couple of items here. The house has been demolished, is that correct?
Correct.
So, the house is no longer there?
Except for the foundation.
Yeah, because, uh, council, someone's going to raise an issue of what's called abandonment, but we don't intend to abandon, we intend to rebuild on that foundation, is that correct?
And plus, and some addition.
Which is part of the variance application here, is that correct?
Yes.
And, uh, just so the board understands, uh, the, uh, Nina's, the report indicated a subdivision would be appropriate, and that's something, I guess, we missed. So, we will provide an application for a minor subdivision, which is a re-subdivision, to, uh, put both, uh, lots together, and I'll talk to her later about that, because the board, the last thing we are going to do is to sell off the house at any point in time, so we would merge it with the existing application. Okay.
Uh, so, yeah, as I mentioned, I was just giving you an overview of how the circulation of the site works, and again, we do receive these, uh, reports for both planning and engineering comments, and we don't have any issues, and we will work with both the planning department and engineering department to, uh, address, uh, those comments to the satisfaction of the, of both the departments and the board itself. Also, I think, uh, let's now move to our sheet, C dash O three. This is, uh, sheet C dash O three, titled Traffic Circulation Plan. And again, the date on this plan is also January sixth, twenty twenty-two. This is just an overview, and we run templates to make sure that we have enough circulation for passenger cars as well as fire truck turning template, and we showed how the turning templates will work and how the fire trucks, and they have clear access in and out of the facility. And I think one of the comment, and again, I didn't get a chance to review in detail the comments, but I quickly skimmed it. I think one of the comment was to use a different type of fire truck, which we don't have any issue. We'll run the template, and I'm pretty confident that we shouldn't have any issue, and we'll show that template as well. So, the idea of this particular plan is just to show that the traffic circulation, both for emergency vehicles, including fire trucks, and any, uh, vehicles that will be utilized for the, uh, facility, including any FedEx deliveries, UPS deliveries, or, uh, food delivery, uh, can be accommodated easily onsite. Uh, sheet C dash O four, titled Grading Plan. The date on it is again, January sixth, twenty twenty-two. This is our site grading, and as you can see how busy this plan is, that shows how steep this site is. It's very steep site, and, uh, in order to develop the site, we have to rely on a grading, I mean, a retaining wall. The retaining wall runs along the eastern property line, wraps up the parking lot in the back, and then go to the, the western, uh, property, along the western property parking driveway. And that wall is, on the smaller side, the smaller height is about five, five and a half feet, on the high side, it's about twenty-four feet. So, it's a pretty, about twenty-four feet, twenty-three and a half to twenty-four feet. So, so, uh, that is in order to have some usable area so that we can develop the site as well as we have enough parking to satisfy the requirements and the needs for this particular facility to operate. And, uh, as I, as I mentioned, like, the retaining wall, again, there are some comments regarding the retaining wall and the guardrails, uh, the light poles, those are the things, as I said, like, we will work, and I don't think the applicant has any other choice or option but to comply with those, and I think it's a good, these are good comments, and we will address those comments in the resolution compliance or any revised plans subsequent to this hearing. So, yeah, we, we have that, and we understand that, that those things need to be addressed. And then at the bottom portion, the bottom half of the, uh, plan shows a slope analysis. It shows the severity of the slopes, how severe the slopes are. And, uh, we are encroaching in certain areas for the slopes over thirty percent, which I believe triggers a waiver also, and that's something the applicant seeking. But again, we are trying to leave the maximum critical area away, as I mentioned before. It is part of that wetlands complex and stream, so we, the whole idea here was to stay away from them, uh, from that area. However, because of the steepness in certain areas, we are proposing, where we are proposing parking spaces, we might have to encroach into the steep slope, and that's what triggers the waiver for this. Sheet C dash five, C dash O five, uh, Utility Plan, uh, again, dated January sixth, twenty twenty-two. The utilities, we are proposing all new utilities for both the Imam's, uh, uh, house as well as the building. And we bent, we went back and forth with the engineering department upon the utilities connections, uh, because there is no sewer in front of the property. However, on the eastern side, I don't forget the name of the development, when the development was built, uh, there were, there were a couple of stubs that were left, uh, I mean, left for the future development and future connection, uh, from this side or any side adjacent to here. So, what we are doing is we are utilizing one of those stubs, and we are extending sewer line along Morris Town, uh, Morris Town Avenue or Morris Town Road and tie and utilize one of the stubs that is there. There are, I think, three stubs, and we are going to utilize one of the stub there. And again, it's going to be through a forcement because of the grades. We are lower, so we have to pump, uh, the sewer, and we're going to provide a forcement, and that design will be finalized. And I think the details, as far as the details are shown, the short details and the profiles were included as part of this submission as, at the request of the engineering department. Also, we have new electric, water, and, uh, those services for, for the facility. One other thing, we are proposing some hydrants along, uh, inside during, I mean, inside the property. However, we got some comments from the fire marshal, and they recommend, uh, different location for fire hydrants, fire lanes, striping and things like that, and again, we don't have any issues. We can move around, uh, the fire hydrants to the satisfaction of the fire marshal, and, uh, since we are bringing new fire service and, uh, new water service to the facility. One thing is missing from these plans, I think it's probably didn't show it up. We are also proposing, uh, yeah, it's not shown here, but I'm going to walk, I will just talk over. This project is classified as major development as per the N G D E P Strong Water Rules, which means he has, it has to meet certain criterias, and that's something the project is designed for. We are designing for an infiltration system, uh, for, for the project, which can include, uh, underground pipe detention system and- which includes underground pipe detention system, and those pipes will be under the paved area. And the idea there is to collect all the runoff from the pavement area as well as from the roof runoff and direct that strong water into the detention basin. And again, as it's a major development, it has to meet NJDEP runoff criterias to reduce the runoff for two, ten, and hundred year, which we are meeting. And there are certain comments on strong water as well, and we'll discuss with Ms. Shapiro about that based on the revised or newer strong water regulations. DEP emphasizes on BMP, green, green infrastructure and BMP techniques, which we will work with the engineering department and see how we can implement those techniques with this design for the project. But, yeah, I looked through it, and I think that's something that we are open, and the applicant is open, and we will work to address those issues. Now, I'm going to go to sheet C dash O six, which is landscaping plan. Again, date on the plan is January sixth, twenty twenty-two. As most of you are aware, this lot is very heavily vegetated currently. So we are proposing within the development area to cut down quite a few trees. And I think I might have a number, yeah, we are removing about two hundred and twenty-seven trees as regulated by the ordinance from the development area where the new building and the parking lot will go. Based, and of course, the ordinance also calls in for the tree replacement plan. So they have the ordinance, or you have the ordinance in place for each diameter or each certain size trees, how many trees needs to be replaced. So that number comes up to be, for two hundred and twenty-seven trees that needs to be removed, the applicant has to replace five hundred and twenty-eight trees. So, again, this is a daunting challenge to replace all the five hundred and twenty-eight trees, considering the rear portion is wetlands. And there are requirements by DEP also that you cannot just flood up the whole area with the trees, and they have certain limitations. So what we are doing is we are trying to maximize our landscaping around the perimeter of the parking lot, where we have some green area. And we are proposing hundred and seven, actually sixty-eight and fifty-eight. So it's about like a hundred and fifteen, hundred and ten, hundred and fifteen trees along the perimeter of the parking lot. And we're also proposing over a hundred shrubs to beautify or aesthetically improve the looks of the entire property. So we, we are not complying with the replacement requirement, but the applicant is trying their best to screen the property or the parking lot and the building by providing perimeter landscaping entries. Last sheet I want to talk today is our lighting plan, which is sheet C dash O seven. Again, the date on the plan is January sixth, twenty twenty-two. We are proposing lighting, again, these are all LED light fixtures downward through shielded fixtures along the perimeter of the parking lot for, to eliminate the parking and a combination on some wall, parking, wall packs also. So between the combination of wall packs and freestanding light poles, we are addressing the lighting as required for the ordinance requirement as well as for the site safety and security reasons. And again, as I mentioned, these are all LED type light fixtures downward through and fully shielded. And the idea, I think we have added some notes because we don't want all the lights to run all night long. And so we have certain timings, like when they will be turned on and when we turn off. Usually, we only, or the applicant only needs minimum security lighting during when the facility is not being used. So we will just light up the entrance areas and a small parking area, and of course, the residential dwelling. When the facility is operational, or there are functions, or there are things that are happening in the facility, then depending upon that, any lights, whatever is needed, they will be turned on and off. But all the lights will be turned off at the end, not all, except for the safety and security, but the most of the lights will be turned off when there is no services or nothing is happening inside the building. So that to, not to have a nuisance light running all night long. And again, those light timings can, will be changed based on the timing of the year. As I mentioned, the prayers timings fluctuate with the winter and summer. So those light timings will be adjusted accordingly. I think that I have pretty much.
Ms. Shapiro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to back up a little bit because when I first started looking at the application, the first thing I look at is the survey, because I saw that the wetlands area were at the rear of the property, so the northern side of the property. And when I looked at the survey, and there was something missed in our completeness review, in that the survey wasn't signed. Anyway, I, I go through the detail of looking at it because what, what the survey's job is to do is when the environmental specialist goes out and delineates wetlands or delineates state open waters, the survey then picks up the, the data. One of the notes on the plans that was provided by the surveyor indicates that the wetland flagging shown hereon were found at the property but were not set by the surveying company, and they named the surveying company, and could not be verified. But then, I was reassured, because when I went to the site plans, I did see that there is an LOI number. Happy to have seen it, except the LOI, I believe, from my recollection, was issued in December sixth of twenty sixteen. An LOI typically is for five years. Now, you can have up to two one-year extensions, I believe. I, I think I spelled it out in my memo. So one, I wanted to know the validity of the LOI. Two, when I was looking, and it was difficult, when I was looking at the plans for the survey, there were some of the trees that were identified on the plans, they had given size. But in the center, where you sort of see, I, I guess, the middle portion of the building, there's an area on the survey that has data points that are called W T L N D. To me, that means wetlands. So one, what is, what is the current status of the LOI? It must be current. And two, what is the disposition of the existing, what I'm calling wetlands at the center, and why was there not a delineation done for that area?
Can I answer? Yeah, the wetlands delineation was done for the entire site. I think what happened is the plan that we used was when the survey was completed, and I think we, one of the comment during the completeness review process, we got a comment that we need to get an LOI done. And the LOI was done later on to that, as far as the flagging and the thing. But we did receive a signed plan, the applicant received a signed plan, stamped plan from DEP. And that reflects the same surveys, we actually, we have to, we, we did send out the surveyor out again when we did the flagging, because the DEP, as far as the LOI permit, they need a survey location and the transacts and all that stuff information. So we did prepare a plan specifically for DEP. I, I have a PDF copy, and I can ask the surveyor to submit a sign and seal copy of their plan to you.
Okay, is that part of the LOI that was issued to you in twenty sixteen?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, have you filed an extension on that LOI?
I don't think so.
Okay, there needs to be a new LOI. But I would, I would surmise that the, I want to know what the survey intended by saying W T L N D. Because to me, you are filling, it might be isolated wetlands. And if so, a general permit is an easy fix with DEP, if it's an isolated wetlands. One of my other comments in here, and it's probably under, more under the site plan itself, is when I, when I, you know, am on your side of the table, I always put what, what the value or the resource value of that wetlands is. Whether it's ordinary or intermediate or exceptional, I like to correlate why I'm putting a fifty-foot buffer. In addition to the LOI, I always have in my back pocket that natural heritage database information, because, one, your threatened and endangered species dictate what that buffer line is along with the resource value that's identified. And that's why it's important for us to see that stamped plan and to see the backup documentation and to even see the information provided by the natural heritage database.
Just to clarify that, I'm looking at sheet C dash O two. We have a note towards the top right-hand corner, which says, existing limit of wetlands area is verified by NJDEP letter of interpretation. Is verified by NJDEP letter of interpretation issued on December sixth, two thousand and sixteen. And then we put the file number to that, too.
Yes, again, twenty sixteen is what I'm talking about, right? And if you do, they say, if you want to file an extension, you must do it no earlier than the year before the expiration, within that last year. So if you didn't file an, an extension, you are now a new application in front of DEP. One of the more interesting things on this application is when you go onto G I, onto NJDEP's GeoWeb, right? They have sort of a GIS layer that shows, and I'm going to, I'm going to butcher this. It, it shows an archaeological site grid. And so archaeological sites are locations of prehistoric historic occupation or activities possessing archaeological value. This is an indication of archaeological districts or site that, one, are either on the natural heritage database that are, either have historical buildings located, and I go through a caveat of that. It is concerning that the building is gone, you know? Because it might have had archaeology, I'm sorry, historical significance to it. So I'd like to hear why the building was taken down.
There is a question for the applicant, I believe I cannot answer that.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to that. I think, one, you know, if there's archaeological significance, and I'm going to explain to the board, you know, we're all familiar, and I hope you are, with Cottrell Farm Park, which is being developed currently by the township. We actually found two significant archaeological areas with what our state historic preservation office calls locus areas. Don't ask me what the acronym means, I tried to figure it out, I don't know. But what we do is, for us, we did a phase one environmental report. For us not to do a phase two environmental report to satisfy NJDEP and the state historic preservation office, we told them we were not going to excavate in that area, right? So in doing that, we then preserve any of that archaeological, I want to say, material in the ground, right? So I think what I want to know is, from DEP, do they have any archaeological? I think when you go back with your LOI, and I've already put a call into the state historic preservation office to get a little bit more detail on your site, we're going to figure it out together, right?
Yeah, because I'm not very familiar with the archaeological sites until I saw that report today. So I have to do some homework myself as well, and I appreciate if you can coordinate that.
Yep, so there are items in our, in our site, under site plan that we had labeled. One was, if you look, Natalie, if you pan so that we could see the site triangle in the front, it might not be on this plan, it might be on probably the site plan, which is the first, is this the site plan?
Yeah, this is the site plan, C two.
Okay, is it on C, is it on the green? C three? I just want, I want to make sure that you're following Ashdod Island as far as the site, the site triangle. And I'm going to let Brian take the lead on it. But, one, I want the, the site clearance in both directions. And then, I want you to be careful with that landscaping that you're proposing right up against the edge of pavement in the front of the house, because it might be in conflict. When you drew that site triangle, you were drawing it from like the edge of the pavement area, from what I recall when I looked at the plans. It really needs to be at the driver's eye, right? Set back behind the stop bar. There are other comments in here, but as far as circulation goes, Natalie, can you pan to the rear, to the rear of the parking lot on the northern side? There's that last drive aisle. And so you have a one-way in the, one-way entrance in the northern direction, and then you have two ways at that last aisle. And then you have a one-way in the southern direction on the site to get out of the site. And so when you're in the, in the circulation element of that, I'm figuring that last drive aisle should be a one-way in the eastbound, I mean, sorry, in the westbound direction, so that you don't have people coming out of their space or people, you know, coming down the end of that aisle towards the eastern direction and realizing it's a one-way coming towards them, and there's nowhere for them to turn around. So that was one of the site comments I had made. I said, oh, you gotta then, you know, add a couple of do not, you know, do not enter signs. You have to, you have to, at the end of the middle aisle, you have to put a no right turn, and you have to figure out that, that last aisle, because I don't think a two-way would work there.
And I agree, I agree, I think that's a very good point, and I think we can manage to do that, yes.
I know Vina and I talked about that trash. And as much as I wouldn't want you to touch the environmental, but because you have to go back with an LOI, and because you have to probably talk to them about this archaeological site, I would encourage you to take that, and in an effort not to lose any more parking spaces, do a freshwater wetlands transition averaging plan. So you could move that trash, because I don't know how the trash guy is going to get to it, and you're going to move it to the north-eastern corner of the site. And then, this way, when the, the garbage hauler comes down that entrance driveway, he then comes in headfirst, right? And he picks up the garbage dumps it, comes back out, and then comes and continues around the rear of the site, and then exits out. That's probably more doable than what you have there. I know that you have a gate there, that gate is facing the, the parking spot. And I know Vina goes into a lot of detail on the trash. I'm going to leave that. You talk a lot about utilities. I want to see the roadway improvements, and this is not just me particularly, but Middlesex County. On Morris Town Road, you're going to have to show us what your limits when you connect to OBMUA. Now, in, in my memo, I'm silent on anything that has to do with sanitary because it's the Old Bridge Municipal Utilities Authority. But we like to know for purposes of traffic that, what you're going to do as far as traffic control when it has to be implemented and when you have to do that roadwork. Now, I'm not exempt. And I know, I know, when Middlesex County, one, you're going to give them a Middlesex County application for the planning board, but two, you're going to give Middlesex County Department of Public Works a road opening permit application. They're going to ask you for traffic control plans specific to your site when you're doing that work on Morris Town Road. I encourage you to submit it now, because those traffic control plans should be made part of the set that you're providing us. So we would need to know the limits of your off-site improvements. One of the other things I had mentioned early on in the memo, and I have to double-check on my facts on this. There is an affordable housing contribution that you would probably have to make. But houses of worship are exempt. But because you have residences on site, I have to do a little bit more digging on that. So I'm going to pause on that one for a little bit, and I'm going to come back at the next meeting and maybe give you some clarification. There are waivers that I'm, that you, that I say, either you ask for a waiver or you seek, I'm sorry, you, you either revise your plans or you ask for a waiver. Some of these things, I don't know if you can accomplish on this site. You have a very, you have steep slopes at your rear, you're trying to put this parking lot. You cannot exceed a six percent slope per ordinance. No, now you're exceeding, and I only checked a couple of space, like a couple of spots, but you're trying to squeeze everything in with, you know, a parking lot that's, you know, pretty steep for, for parking lot. Also, when you look at that retaining wall, it can't just be a submission of a generic detail to us. It must be designed at this stage by a structural engineer and approved by my office. When you look at the landscaping on the southern and northern part, if you have a retaining wall that's twenty-four feet high, nobody's going to see any of those plantings. So I'm not, I'm not understanding the, the plantings, I know it's very wooded on the other side. I do appreciate the plantings because of the amount of wooded area that you're, you're removing on site. I'm going to defer to our conservation officer, who hasn't had an opportunity yet to supply you with, with a report. But just know, if you are deficient on your replanting, there will be a compensation for replanting. I'm not going to go through every detail, I just wanted to highlight some of the important comments. One being, when you look at the grading plan or the utility plan, one of the things that concerned me the most is that there's no drainage for me to review. There are inlets, but there's no pipes, there's no grates, there's no inverts, there's no pipe size. In fact, there is a detail for an infiltration basin, non-GI, non-green infrastructure, that's provided. that's provided on the detail sheet. I don't know where it's going in this park, no delineation of where it's going. Somehow, a layer in AutoCAD has been turned off, or something is going on where I don't see that.
That's what happened, I think the layer got, I mean, it got frozen or something?
Yes.
I think that's what happened, but yeah.
But I need that.
Sure.
What bothers me is that in your stormwater report, I didn't even see storm cals. I could've went and tried to figure it out. There was not a storm capacity analysis worksheet for the drainage or the storm system that you're proposing on site. Be sure to include that with your next submission. The stormwater review memo looks like a lot of comments, but a lot of it is me saying, don't forget, you have, you were not deemed complete until a certain date. You have to comply with the new stormwater regs. Can that be accomplished? Because I don't have any information other than your report, which I don't know is enough to prove that to me. One thing about lighting, and I, I think this is very important, Morristown Road is not well-lit. It is dark at night. So having your access visible is very important. When I look at the foot candle readings at the intersection of the driveway and Morristown Road, you were, you were saying it's zero. But what I would do is, I would encourage another, another light at that intersection, at both driveway intersections. And then I would have the person that's doing your lighting analysis take into consideration any lighting that is on Morristown Road. Now, if there is any poles out there in proximity, you could actually go to JCPN now and ask them to place a light on there and pay for it. Now, we're on the hook for the electric, but that is a better alternative to make sure that that entrance is lit. There's also requirements for the pedestrian walkways, the sidewalks. I don't, I don't have enough information on that lighting plan to see if you're meeting the minimum to average on there. And I don't have enough on there to see that you're meeting the, the minimum requirements in your parking area. I think the parking area is supposed to be a minimum of one foot candle and you were less. So, anyway, those are things I wanted to highlight for tonight. My understanding from your original testimony is that you can accomplish whatever is in this report, that is 33 pages, half of which is planning. But to me, some of the constraints on this property, I would have to see that. So I would say, let's work together between now and our next meeting, so that I could see that this site is workable with what you have proposed on it. I'm gonna leave parking to Vina and, and Brian to discuss. And again, there's other things, I don't know if, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take up too much time. But again, from my understanding, I feel like some of the other ones do not have to be highlighted tonight. If I remember something, I will bring it to your attention. But that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for highlighting everything you did. Was there a response? I saw you.
I was gonna say, when the time comes, I don't think one month is gonna be appropriate to adjourn to the, I think we're gonna need two, because I, we're gonna meet with Nicole and Vina, we're gonna have a workshop, and then I gotta get plans, revised plans in 20 days prior to a meeting. So I'm only fooling myself if I ask for one month, assuming I could even be on the next agenda. So when we get to that point, I think we should look probably at, at January.
It's just, to be honest, it might be even three months.
Yeah, I think we need a lot more time, because of the DEP involvement, and we don't know what the archaeological entails.
Whatever you say. I leave it to the two.
And actually, the zoning board has, the agendas are quite full. I would suggest to the board that we continue it to the next meeting, only because we have not finalized our next year's calendar yet, yet. At the next meeting, we will do so, so then we will carry the application to another date. And I think, yes. Yes. So, board members, this is actually for you. You have seen that the planning report or the planning memo has been pretty comprehensive. And I did that only because this is not a usual D1 use variance application that the board is used to. I don't recollect in the past couple of years when we really had a D3. So the first section of the memo is actually to guide you to evaluate the application. Again, the use is permitted, but it is, it is permitted conditionally with a bunch of conditions. And the applicant violates a couple of conditions of that conditional use, and that is why it's in front of the board. Should you have any questions during the planning testimony, or during the course of time, please feel free to ask me or Mr. Dusty regarding the proofs that are required. Going back to Mr. Khan's opening statement about the variance that is required, there is a parking variance required, as per Brian's and my analysis. There is also a variance required for the setback. And yes, he accurately described it as an engineer, but I just want to clarify it a little bit more. This site originally had a single-family home. A single-family home is not a permitted use in the ETO1 zone, and so it's an existing non-conformity. However, now, the applicant is proposing to construct a house of worship. And as part of the house of worship, a parsonage, I would call it a parsonage, or an iman's house, is an ancillary use or an accessory use to the house of worship. So the setback requirement, there are two setback requirements. The first one is for the home or the parsonage. That is actually a condition of the conditional use. So typically, in any zone, an accessory building has different setback requirements. We don't allow accessory buildings in the front yard. Typically, accessory buildings are only permitted in the rear yard. However, the way the conditions of the conditional use are written, it ties in the setbacks of the accessory use with the principal building. And it does not really say where it can be. So the ordinance is silent, I had to assume that it's permitted in the front yard, but then those setback requirements apply. So the single-family home, the setbacks on the single-family home are violations of the condition of the condition of use variance. But the main building, which is the house of worship, that still follows the ETO1 setback requirements. And when we crafted the ETO1 ordinance originally, it was adopted in 2015. Later on, in 2018, I revised the ordinance. When we revised the ordinance, we added a minimum front yard setback and a maximum front yard setback requirement, only because the vision for this area was smaller lots, one-acre parcels, where commercial properties are closer to the street, right away. We didn't want to see a seep of parking right in the front yard. And that is why we had a minimum and maximum. The house of worship is setback further than what the zone allows, and that is why C variance or bulk variance is required on the front yard setback. So that's a clarification on the setback. Now, I don't wanna go through each of the, like, my planning comments, but to Mr. Khan's statement, I just wanted to elaborate more. And I take Mr. Stoll's comment in the beginning, that ask as many questions as you can, so that we are better prepared. And this is some, this is a food for thought, what I'm gonna say, and something for the board to also evaluate. The applicant meets the floor area ratio requirement. They're not asking for a D4 use variance. But where sometimes as a planner, I feel the D4 or the floor area fails is, it really does not take into account the constraints that are on the property. It's not like net gross floor area, or it's the gross. Nan made a comment right in the beginning, sorry, Mr. Khan. Mr. Khan made a comment right in the beginning, that the recreational facilities are not typical of every mosque. And because this site is larger than what they are used to, they took the liberty of adding recreational facilities to the house of worship. What I want you to think is, Natalie, can you go to the slope analysis map and the map that shows the wetland? Yes, you can stay there. So now, if you look at the site, yes, the lot is almost five acres. But if you look at the constraints, the steep slopes, and although we don't limit it to net floor area, we try to take care of it based on the critical slopes and the buffers required for critical slopes. We do not allow structures in a critical slope. We do not, we require that there is a 50-foot buffer in the critical, from the critical slopes. Also, there are environmental constraints. So if you zoom out a little bit, Natalie, the actual developable portion on the property is much smaller than that five acres. Mr. Khan, for our next meeting, or meeting with us, I want you to tell me, how much is the developable portion of the property, minus all the constraints, including the buffers, the critical, critical slope, the wetlands? And then, what is the percentage of the square footage of the building in comparison to that developable portion? I think it's critical to know, because most of my planning comments come down to one point, that do we really have that much developable land to put in all the accessory uses that are proposed on this site? And it's something that you have to convince the board, you have to convince the professionals. So I think that would be a good starting point for you to look at. And that might, when you come back with that, we might be able to answer some of, or majority of the questions that have been raised in the memo, because most of the questions direct to, is the site, will the site be able to support a development this scale? And I think that's all. I will leave the other comments for the next time.
Thank you, Ms. Watt. Mr. Reproska.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a number of comments regarding traffic and parking. I think most of them will probably be deferred to a future expert witness. But we did have some comments regarding circulation and the site plan. Mr. Khan, I think you mentioned you had seen them, we can kinda work through some of them. Some of them I'd like to just kinda highlight. We talked about the guide rail, introducing the guide rail. So to Nicole's point, I want you to kinda be cognizant of how that may impact the landscaping that is proposed around the side yards. We wanna see that on the plan and see if there is a significant impact to the landscaping that you're proposing. If you look at the plan in front of the building, it seems like there's, I would say, a significant amount of striping on the east and western side near the entrances. Maybe there's an opportunity there to provide some additional landscaping in those areas to supplement where you may be losing some landscaping. In terms of the angled spaces on the ingress, I believe there, you're asking for a variance on the, the size of those spaces. And if we're gonna go angled, and we're gonna go a little bit smaller than what the ordinance requires, we wanna make sure that we're looking at kinda the short side of the space and measuring that 18 feet. And I think on the plan, you're kinda, you're measuring on the long side, so that may affect the circulation on the site, so we'll wanna take a closer look at that as well. Outside of that, a couple follow-up questions regarding your testimony. The 250 persons that you, you were talking about on Friday that you may see, is that the maximum capacity of the prayer hall, or is that the anticipated attendance?
I think the capacity of the prayer hall is more than that. This is the attendance that the applicant thinks that they anticipate, pretty much for that, because there are two other mosques within a few miles, or a couple of miles from this. So it's not like taking their people, but again, those things, those two mosques are really crowded. So it's basically diverting some of the traffic from those mosques into this mosque.
Do you know what that, the maximum capacity is for the prayer hall?
I think the architect can explain that, but I think it's around like 400 something.
Okay.
I think the testimony with regard to the 250, was there were 500 people which would come on the festival day, but they would be split 250 and 250 by two different prayer services. So there would be no reason, hopefully, that there would not be 500, there would be 500 people at any one time.
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you. And the potential to kinda separate that Friday service, what, what would that typically look like? Is, are they staggered by a certain timeframe, or is each service slightly shorter? What, what would that kinda look like operationally?
Usually based on, again, this is probably my 13th or 14th mosque in New Jersey, and again, knowing the system or knowing how they work, the places where they have two services, they start like around 12:30. The first service, I mean, 12:30 is when people start coming, around quarter to 1:01, they have the sermons. And usually, that lasts for about half an hour. So let's say the first service ends at 1:30, the next service will start at 2:00. So that'd give about half an hour for the people to leave the facility. And usually, Friday is a working day for most of the people. So usually, and again, they, most of them comes during the lunch hour, so they have limited time. So you will see most of the traffic inflow close to the time of the service is when the actual service starts. So I would say 80% of the parishioners, they come like, around like 10 or 15 minutes before the service. And they'll leave right after the service, which is probably five minutes after. So I think within that 15 or 20 minutes, you will see like the whole mosque is empty after the service. So the next service is scheduled for about half an hour later, so that when they come, there is no interaction between the people leaving and the people coming.
Okay, thank you. I think I have one final question. You mentioned on, based on your experience, you typically wouldn't see kinda the sports facility on this, you know, type of use. Do you typically see the multipurpose rooms in this, you know, in this type of facility? And then, kind of a follow-up to that would be, I think we've heard some testimony about the house of worship being 34,500 square feet, and then the prayer hall being, you know, 4,000 plus or minus square feet. Kind of the differential, you know, the distinguishing factors between the two, based on your experience?
Multipurpose room is an integral part of the facilities. Every mosque, even smaller mosque, they always have the multipurpose room. And the reason there is like, sometimes they have a guest scholars coming in, and they want to give like a lecture. So they usually use those multipurpose room. And Ramadan, like the food they serve, so every masjid that I work, they always have multipurpose room. As far as the basketball and swimming pool, I haven't seen swimming pool in any of them yet. Basketball, North Burns Islamic Center, they have a basketball court. And they have actually, I think, a couple of other recreational, but that facility was an old warehouse that they converted it into a mosque. But they have a basketball court for the kids and other recreational stuff for the kids. And then there is also a mosque in East Windsor, which is about two, two and a half acres, going back to your question, and it's about like 35,000 square feet. They don't have any recreational, but they do have sort of like a hall that they rent out to the community for functions like weddings and things like that. So that's about like 35,000 square feet building.
And the house of worship, the kinda larger square footage, I think I understand that the school will be used on Sunday, kinda a complimentary use. The multipurpose would be also a complimentary use? And like, do they, do they function complimentary or independent of each other?
No, they function complimentary, because like the people, like, let's say if a guest scholar is coming, they usually don't, I mean, they, most of the guest lectures, they don't held on Fridays. They're usually held on Sundays, like when the Sunday school is running. So like, again, on Sundays, most of the people are off from work, too. And they're not in a hurry to come and leave for the services. So it's pretty much run concurrently with the Sunday schools. So the multipurpose room, while the kids are in the school, in Sunday classes, for adults, there might be a lecture in the community room or common room, and that's how it's been utilized.
Okay.
Because the Friday prayer, which is the maximum or peak capacity, it's basically just prayer service in and out. It's a working day, most of the people want to rush back, so they don't have time to stay and chat. Even like, even I see somebody, they just say, hey, hi, how are you? And then they leave and run, because every- And then they leave and run, because everybody's running late, completing their lunch hour, so.
Sure, understood. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Chairman, I do have a question. So Mr. Khan, so that I understand, so when the kids are at school, there is a possibility that there is a separate event that is hosted in one of the multipurpose rooms, right?
It is a possibility if there is a guest lecture. So usually, again, based on, again, based on my experience, the parents who are dropping the kids for Sunday school, sometimes they just sit there, and you will see like maybe few people from the community may come there too. But, and also, if, depending on the lecture, usually the bigger kids, like high school-sized kids, they also join those things. So at an average, I would say you will see maybe if there's a lecture, maybe 30 to 35 people attending that lecture, including the kids.
So, and at the same time, is there a service too?
No.
So it would never happen that there would be service, the multipurpose room would be used, and the schools would be in operation, all three at one time?
And I think that's the whole purpose of the school and things, like when the prayer service, the main emphasis is on the prayer services. Even like, say if there is a time, first of all, the Sunday school works between the morning prayer and the afternoon prayer. So there is no prayer services. But let's say if the Sunday school is discharging kids, and it's time for afternoon prayers. So it is encouraged that all the kids go to the prayer hall and do their prayers, rather than hanging around anywhere else.
And then, one last question. I mean, the recreational facility, can that be used as a multipurpose room? What I'm trying to get at is, I've seen in, when I attend events at the school, generally, they host lectures or back-to-school nights in the gymnasium. Can the activities that happen in these multipurpose rooms be done at the recreational center if you have to scale down the project? That's what, where I'm getting that.
I believe it can be, yeah. Yes, it can be done.
So it could be a truly multipurpose room, including hosting, breaking fasts, and for activities too?
Yes, it can be done.
And I understand that is not the proposal, I'm just throwing that out. Thank you.
Think, if I may, just to see if I can clarify it, my own head. There's not going to be 20 people in prayer, and different 20 people in the multipurpose room, and a different 20 people in the athletic facility, because it's the same 20 people, they're either going to be at prayer or in the multipurpose, and the kids are just, they're in ancillary, they're coming with the parents. And I think that's where some of the confusion may have been, in having the accessories. It's not going to be five separate functions or activities. It's always going to be one activity conjoined with something else. So the parents come, they bring the kids to school. After prayer, they go to the multipurpose. I think that's the way it truly is going to work. But I understood for the traffic, the parking count, there was some question as to whether or not we had to count each individual activity and then group them together.
Right. And actually, my second question was not really related to the confusion or the clarity. My second comment was mostly related to the previous comments I made about how much developable portion of land do we have? Because we are asking, if you look at page, page 14 of the report, the entire page has a bunch of waivers. So we're asking for, you're asking for waivers on numerous items, which include critical slopes and buffers, and that's where my, the question was directed to, how you could minimize those waivers too.
Understood, yeah.
I don't have any questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dasty. I'm going to go to my left. Okay, Ben?
I just have one question. We were talking about the traffic. Correct me if I'm right or wrong in this, but you were saying about, it takes 30 minutes for people to leave and the next group to come in?
No, what I'm saying is like, usually, when there are two services, they're staggered about half an hour. So like, when the services are over, within five, actually, right after the service, which takes like, actual service on Friday is five minutes, probably five to seven minutes. It's, the sermon is about like 10 to 15 before the services. And as you're getting close to the actual service time, then you will see the rush of the people coming in, because, I mean, shortcut is like, you can, you have to attend that service, not the sermon. It is beneficial to attend.
I'm more concerned about the traffic, because you said 30 minutes is more than enough time.
Yeah, so what happens, as soon as the service ends, let's say the service ends at 1:35. So within 1:35 and 1:45, 95% of the people are gone, within 10, 15 minutes. Because they finish their service in five minutes, and then they start leaving. So then, the next service is going to start, let's say, 2 o'clock. So by the time 1:45, 1:50, when the people are coming for the second service, 95% of the mosque is empty, except for some people who are there for.
I'm thinking about the traffic, because people trying to get out and another group trying to get in.
No, no, that's what I'm trying to clarify, is like, that 15 minutes or 10 minutes, the cars usually are gone from the first service. Before, you will see the major influx of people coming in for the second service. So the 10 minutes, it's all, it's usually takes 10 minutes pretty much for the parking lot to get empty. And the next guys are coming like maybe five, 10 minutes later. So by the time they come in, the parking lot is already empty, all the traffic from the first service is gone.
Okay, all right, thank you. Vice Chairman Connor.
Yes, the parking lot, I heard 419 might be required. What's the policy, what's the process, if for when the parking lot is full? Do you turn people away? I mean, what are you going to do?
I think that's a question for the applicant, like what procedures they have in place, I don't know if.
Well, I would suggest that, Mr. Connor, that may be a question for our traffic engineer, because we've got to do the calculations, and your question with respect assumes that the calculations are correct from Vena, who took each different activity. We don't necessarily agree that it's got to be 400 spaces, it may be 150 or two. So I would just ask for your indulgence. We'll bring back our traffic engineer and give you a better, better information.
That's fair, thank you.
Mr. Connor, if I may, we kind of can look at it in a couple of different ways. All this uses separate, or as the applicant's kind of alluding to, maybe they're complimentary to each other, and you may not need each one separately. So in our traffic review, we had suggested and recommended that they provide a parking study of similar facilities, so we can see what that true parking demand may be for these types of facilities. So hopefully, the applicant will provide that information in the future for you. Sure.
Anything else, too? I have some questions and probably more comments that we could probably bring forward to further meetings that I think you might want to touch on. But one thing I don't remember hearing, what is the congregation base? Is it, is there a finite number?
Again, I would differ. That was a question I asked my client, but he answered a different question.
I thought so, but I.
You were, I mean, I can bring him back on, or we can provide that to you at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that, I think that the public would probably want to know, certainly the board would want to know, and I think the professionals want to know, and I think it would be a good thing to highlight.
I just want to tell you how many the congregants are and where are the demographics. I mean, are they coming from Old Bridge, East Brunswick, mainly Old Bridge, Madawan? Just some idea as what the community is, might be of interest to the board.
Right. And this is full-service access in and out, correct? Left, right, sun, both drives?
Yes. When you say full service, means like one way in and one way out?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We had another project over on Route 35, where they worked on a similar split situation on holidays. And they had an extremely large traffic problem on 35. It was on the Northmount side.
Actually, I wasn't involved in that.
You were the, I think you were the, you were the engineer of record, right? And you did that split service, and I think that that satisfied a lot of the homeowners in the area, and I think it satisfied the board as well.
That is correct.
And they also put in recreation, but it was outdoor. If you recall, there was basketball, outdoor. So I think that's a good, that's a, well, in this sense, that's a good thing. As the engineer noise, what kind of noise generation is going to come out of here? I think that the, probably the public is going to want to know that, particularly those that live in the neighborhood. Is that recreational area going to generate more? I would think that the house of worship would generate very little, but if it's something might want, you might want to address. How much is the, these retaining walls, are they higher in some areas than other, obviously, because of the slope? Does that mitigate any, or abate any noise going off the property? Might want to talk about.
These are all pretty confined within the property.
Okay, okay. I'm sure that's going to be brought up by someone.
One of the questions could be the call to worship, that's going to be.
All indoors, like nothing, there are no speakers, nothing.
Right. And people are going to, I'm sure people are going to be curious about what, how much noise is this going to generate? There's going to be cars in and out, in and out. And I think if that can be explained and understood. Water circulation is probably another issue that's probably going to come up, and it wasn't seen on the plans, but I read, I read about it in the reports, and everyone is, wants to know, where is the water going from your property? And nobody wants it on theirs. I think you have a car, I don't know whether it's sales or what they do next to you on the, that would be to the.
You know, Ms. Shapiro raised the same question as to the drainage, but she didn't say the, she saw the inlets and outlets, but didn't see the piping.
Right. But it means sometimes more to the public than it means to the professionals. They want to get it right. The public wants to know, their only concern is, is that coming over here? Is it going across the street? Where's that going to flow?
Just to answer, it's going towards the back where the wetlands are, and we are proposing a riprap and thing, and then we'll discharge it into the.
Right. And you have Cheesecake Village to your backside over there behind the wetlands. I know it's a distance, but I'm sure it's going to be a concern. So I think if we put those things out when we get the opportunity to, it might help stem questions or concerns, I think, more than anything else. The house, is the architect going to talk about the new build?
Yes.
He will, okay. We, you are going to apply for a subdivision, I believe, correct?
Yes, as soon as I saw that, it's just something we missed.
Okay.
So, by the way, you'll have to do a subdivision plan, do a separate sheet, and then we'll file the application.
Okay, and a plan will be filed with Conservation Officer, Ms. Lavallo, correct, for the trees?
It has been filed.
It has been, okay, I didn't see.
Yes, and it is being reviewed.
Okay, I'm sorry, then I missed that.
So we will have that prior to the next meeting.
Fire suppression, I heard about fire hydrants, there's a report in there that it may need fire suppression via sprinklers.
And that the architect is going to talk about.
Very good. And over floor parking was an issue, but we're going to discuss that by the traffic engineer. All right, thank you. I think we covered everything, and I just wanted to offer some points that might, might be useful.
I don't know what your timing is, should I bring the architect?
Absolutely.
Thank you all, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Connor.
Ashraf.
Wait, timeout. You want a break? Okay, can we give the photographer a ten?
No.
Okay.
Not her, any other floor report.
We'll stand in recess for, let's just say, five to seven minutes, if that's okay, and we'll try and get back right on the air again. We stand in recess. All right, I believe we were back from break. This is the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board. I'd ask the vice secretary to please call a roll.
Chairman Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Stoner.
Here.
Ms. Chevalier.
Here.
Mr. Dasty.
Here.
Ms. Shapiro.
Here.
Mr. Watt.
Here.
Mr. Prosser.
Here.
And myself, Ms. C. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. C. This is a matter of 66-2020Z that we are continuing on after a short recess.
All right, if I may, Ashraf, why don't you raise your right hand, please?
Sir, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully in this matter before the board?
I do.
Can we have your name, please, sir?
Ashraf Ragab, last name R-A-G-A-B.
Thank you.
Spell the first, I know how to spell.
Ashraf is A-S-H-R-A-F.
Thank you very much. And Ashraf, what is your profession, please?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
For how long have you been so licensed?
21 years.
And you're like, 21.
21.
And the license is still force in effect?
Yes.
And have you testified before any planning or zoning boards or municipal boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I did.
On how many occasions?
We accept his credentials, Mr. Stone, thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to be complete.
Yes.
All right, you were engaged by the applicant to design a mosque on these premises that we've been discussing, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, I'm going to leave you to it. Please describe, if you will, the elevations, floor plans, and whatever you need to describe, including fire suppression and security.
Sure. So we have been engaged by Mr. Ahmed to design a community center and with a house of worship and a sports facility, all into one building for the organization, which is Medina Masjid on Morristown Road in Old Bridge. We have gone through the zoning calculations and the zoning analysis, and we set on a size of the building that was below the allowable building size as per the lot area. And we did our best to fit all the uses that the client wanted us to fit in. My firm has been engaged in multiple houses of worship and Islamic centers in multiple areas of New Jersey, close to 20. Normally, the house of worship and the multipurpose room are given in any of these Islamic centers. The sports facility is the one that my client requested, that is something that most of the Muslim centers now in New Jersey are looking into, just because of the youth factor. The youth are not attracted to the houses of worship on their own. They do need a youth center for them to come in, and while they're there, they can start to get some religious education, you know, attend the prayers, you know, become part of the community. Otherwise, the youth are somewhat getting lost, you know, out and about, away from the house of worship and away from the community center. So it was important, and it is important for multiple Muslim organizations to include youth centers now, and that's happening in South Brunswick, in West Windsor, in multiple, multiple houses of worship that are now looking into adding youth centers into their facilities, because of the importance of that. And in Homedale also, and these are all projects that we're working on with these communities. So this building was designed, we tried to fit it on the lot as best as we could. So the lot is, as the site engineer described, a steep lot, goes from the street towards the back, towards the north side, with a pretty steady slope. It goes down further, you know, with a steeper slope as it gets into the wetland in the back. But sort of a steady slope towards the back of the, of the property. So we designed the building in three slices, basically. It's three stories, each story takes two components of the building, and the third level, which is the lowest level, is only the third component all the way down. Most of it is underground, actually, which is the swimming pool. So, and that's the sports complex, that's the last third of the building. The building is pretty much three-thirds. Could be divided up into three sections, the first section is the closest.
Just for the record, these plans that you're referring to are copies of the original plan submitted to the board, is that correct?
That is correct.
And when you're referring to them, please refer to the sheet number in order that Tammy can replicate it on the screen.
Sure. So if we start from the road backwards, then we would have to go to sheet A03, and that's the highest level. That's the level that's facing Morristown Road. In that one first third of the building is the second level, the multipurpose room, and the two apartments and support facilities. A small kitchen, some toilets, and stairs.
Change the glasses, eh?
So that's the first third of the building. The middle third is dedicated to the actual prayer areas and some support facilities, the Sunday school, the library, there are some lounges for women in the upper floor, and downstairs is the men's prayer area. There's some coat and shoe rack areas, again, some toilets, and staircases and elevators. So that floor carries to the edge of the gymnasium. The gymnasium is a high space, two stories high, so it's open to below at the last third. So the last third is not part of the floor, it's only the first two-thirds. If you go backwards toward A zero-two, now we're going down one level. The first third is the lower level of the multipurpose room, and also some storage and toilet facilities and staircases in the first third. The middle third is the prayer hall, the main prayer hall, which is the men's prayer hall in the lower level. The women's prayer hall is the mezzanine level. There is, the main entrance of the street is on this section, the middle section. And we had to really calculate the main entrances to be in that middle point because parts of the, the further building is now underground, and the lower part is actually above ground. It's not, it's not on grade anymore because the slope keeps going. So we flattened the area in the middle section of the property to allow for all these entrances from the front and the back. And also, there are some offices and administrative areas. There's a men's lounge, some mechanical spaces. And here, we get to the beginning of the sports facility, which is the basketball court at the last part of the building. Below the basketball court is a swimming pool that's mostly underground, and that is the lowest level under the basketball court. There is nothing at that level for the rest of the building because it's all above, the grade is going higher at this point. So this is pretty much how the building is going.
May I ask you a question? Because now you're going to do things. Does the floor of the basketball court actually open, and then the pool is underneath it?
No, there are two different floors.
Two different floors?
Yes.
All right, I was thinking of the Wonderful Life movie.
No.
Okay.
And next to this swimming pool, there are some toilets and lockers for the, you know, changing rooms and showers and that sort of things. There's staircase that goes up to the rest of the building. Sheet A zero-four is the elevation, and the elongated, the long side elevations, you can see that the grade starts high, it gets flattened artificially, basically, in the middle, and then it keeps going lower towards the north side of the building. From the other side, same thing. The minarets and the domes signify the middle portion of the building, which is the prayer area. The rest of the building are multipurpose and sports facility and some support spaces, classrooms, offices, lounges, that sort of thing. The last sheet, A zero-five, is the, the front, and the, the front on top and the back. And you can see that the front of the building is pretty low because all you can see is one floor. The site slopes backwards, so from the street side, you wouldn't actually see the full sides of the building. You would only see the top floor.
What is the color? What is the color going to be, the building, the exterior elevation?
Probably earth tones. We're not, yeah, we're not going to do anything, maybe like beige, some, you know, dark green.
Is it stucco covering, or what's the building material?
No, we're showing brick right now. Brick and some stucco around the windows, the arches. And that's...
Is the building going to be sprinkled at all?
Absolutely, yes.
All portions?
Sprinkled, absolutely, yes.
Even the high, the entire building?
Whole building has to be fully sprinkled.
And then it'll also have a, oh, you'll forgive me. It's going to have a fire alarm system with, I forget what you call that, where it shows where the fire or the problem is. It's called an accentuator.
Command center, yeah. Yeah, so this building will comply with all the fire codes and fire protection codes in terms of fire alarm and the sprinkler system.
Okay.
And that we're required to do because of the size of the building.
Oh, I just want to make sure the record was clear. The chairman had asked that question before. Go ahead.
And, and the, the back of the building actually has a bit higher profile because you see the basketball court and the swimming pool sticking above the ground. The portion, portion of the swimming pool is actually below ground. You can see the dashed line there. But a little bit over half of it is above ground, and then the full basketball court. And we try to achieve a regulation basketball court, which is a twenty-foot minimum, clear ceiling height, to any steel structure or any hanging lights or anything. And that, that's about it.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
So what?
I just, maybe this question is not for this time because I need to do some more reading. I'm trying to figure out how the, the height of the building is calculated since the site is contoured, and I have it right in front of me, the definition, but it's going to be hard for me to read. I'm going to try my best. The vertical distance measured from the average elevation of the proposed finish grade at the front of the building to the highest point of the roof. So we'll have to take a closer look at the elevations because I know there were issues with consistency in terms of the building height, and I will have to ensure that a height variance or a D six is not triggered.
So the front elevation actually is the lowest elevation of the building because it only shows the, the top floor. So it's about twenty-four foot at the front.
Let's not try to solve it now only because I need to then go and look, what is the definition of the front elevation? So I need to do some more.
Kind of like, kind of like...
I get it.
Follows the grade a little bit.
Right.
So it goes higher, and then it lowers again, and goes higher and then lowers again. So we would have to actually take multiple...
Right, and I will need that information from you.
No problem. Mr. Proscow?
Yeah, just one clarification on the floor plans. I think there's maybe two number six classrooms. How many classrooms are there?
The floor plans were created in 2019.
Okay. I just want to make sure, is it, is it seven or eight for the record?
It's been out of three years. There's six classrooms, right. No, seven, actually.
Seven?
Seven classrooms, yes. There's number one all the way down to number seven.
Is there two number sixes?
I don't see another number six.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Okay.
Two, two sixes. Try to type up. Anything else, Mr. Proscow?
That's it. Thank you.
Turn your pointer.
Oh, yeah, there is, no, this is, this is not a classroom, no. This is probably like a teacher's room or a copy room or something. So this should not be a classroom. Classroom number six and seven. The room in the middle is a support room, just for a copy room or, you know, a staff room.
I think in the, in the site plan and the architectural plan, there are some inconsistencies which we brought up. So when you come in with a revised submission, you should try and resolve those inconsistencies so that we can make a fair determination of any variances or, especially the square footage will be important when we are coming up with the parking calculations, the parking calculations.
Sure. No problem.
Mr. Dasty?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Chevalier?
I have a question. Who's going to use the offices that you have there? Is it going to be open to the congregation if they need to use the offices?
No. These offices are administrative offices for the organization that runs the building. So accounting office, or, you know, the president's office, or...
Yeah, I just wanted to see if it was, since it's a community center, whether the community would be using the offices as well.
No, these are for the, for the administrative purpose of the building itself.
Mr. Stoner?
No.
Vice Chairman. Connor?
Yes, regarding the, the height, the elevation, what is the height of the dome and also the height of the two towers?
I guess my question is, they're higher than twenty-six feet, correct?
They are, absolutely, yes. But the domes, the domes and the, and the minarets are not subject to any height limitations. These are religious symbols that are similar to church spires or towers that do not, as long as they're not habitable.
Ms. Want?
Yes, they are exempt from the building calculations, so the definition of building height excludes them.
Okay, thank you. And you might remember, Jim, that we had one on Amboy and Route nine. It was repurposing a building, and they had the, they were exempt for the religious...
Saint Mary's.
Religious symbols, yes. Anything else? If I were on the street to the average person coming by on the front elevation, all I'm going to see is the two stories, basically. I would see the religious symbols of the, of the minaret.
See them in the back.
The dome in the back.
Yeah.
How is the house going to blur that? Because that's obviously going to take up, it's kind of catty corner on the, as if, if I looked to the north, I guess it's going to be somewhat in the way of the edge of the building?
Yeah, but, I mean, we, we have drawings for the house here because we submitted the house plans separately to the client.
Yeah.
So...
Do we get a picture next time around, maybe?
Sure.
I know you don't have it there, but... It would, yeah, it would change the, the view from the street. So that's going to...
You can see that we tried to make the house have a little bit of a religious kind of a look.
Right, right, right. And I would hope so, yeah.
Yes, but the height of it is only twenty-eight foot, which is about five foot higher than the building from the front at the, at that side corner. So you will, the top of it will blur the...
When you get a finished plan, you're going to, you're going to let the board, obviously, we're going to see that.
Sure.
Horseenage, I should say.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I have. Mr. Stoll?
So that's all we have for tonight.
Okay. Great presentation. Thank everybody.
Thank you.
I'm going to, if it's okay with you, I'd like to open up the public portion.
You're the boss.
Okay, thank you. This is matter number sixty-six dash twenty-twenty Z located five twenty-four Morristown Road for a house of worship. Is there anyone here that wants to be heard tonight? I'm going to take you one at a time. Whoever comes up, I remind you, please speak into a microphone. I think you'll get the portable one. It's directional, so please hold it as in the right direction. Before you speak, the board attorney has to swear everyone in, okay? So one at a time, and he'll, he'll give you, he'll advise you.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's just good for the public to know. I mean, certainly, there's going to be other hearings on this, so, you know, you would have an opportunity to speak at the next hearing as well. So, you know, if anyone wanted to say their comments that they heard everything, that would be appropriate as well.
Correct. And those who were watching at home may want to come to a, a further hearing, or may not, I don't know. But there's a public portion at, at every application, not just this application. Go ahead, sir. The board attorney will swear you in.
Sir, can you, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully in this matter before the board?
I do.
Can we have your name, please, sir?
My name is David Canizzo, C-A-N-N-I-Z-Z-O.
C-A...
N-N-I-Z-Z-O.
Go ahead, mister.
Thank you.
Your address, sir, relation?
Actually wrote everything I was going to say down. Seventeen Amagansett Lane, mailing address Madawan, part of Aldbridge.
Go right ahead, sir.
So I, I did write down what I was going to say tonight, and you've seen my scribbles have gone on pages, so I apologize, and I am going to probably miss many things. In my old head, it always sounds better.
Take your time. We're all, we're all citizens of the community like you.
Apology for that. Just going to scroll a little higher, maybe?
Yep. Take your time, sir. It's all right.
I know it's late. We all want to get out of here.
That's quite all right. We're here to listen.
I'm rocking all done.
Okay. Just not tonight, please.
All right, so, good evening, and I'm just going to read this because it's just easier.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is David Canizzo. Before I speak about the application at hand, I want to mention that I've lived within a mile or so of this proposed location my entire life. I'm forty-six years old. My parents still live down the street of Route thirty-four in Madawan, about a mile away. I currently live less than point seven miles away from the proposed location. I have driven by the area of the proposed site more than anybody in this room, period. I drive by it anywhere from two to six to eight times every single day of my life for commuting purposes, for my kids, and everything else in between. I want to start by saying I fully support the applicant's right and freedom to practice their faith and religion in our town. However, I do have some concerns about some of the details around the size, usage, and other ancillary effects that may occur if the application is approved as is, keeping in mind that this is being built in a heavily populated residential area off a one-lane per-direction road. And make no mistake, make no mistake about this, this proposal is not just a local township house of worship, but more of a cathedral that will draw hundreds of people from surrounding areas, given it's one of the largest of its kind in central New Jersey, if not the largest. My main concern to start off is traffic. The mosque traffic study concludes that the facility, quote, "will not negatively infect, not negatively impact traffic. The busiest time will be around noon on Fridays for services." According to Medina Masjid's own websites, they have various prayer and social services throughout the week at all different hours, as we heard tonight, including things like daily school services and prayer services five times a day. On their own website, they, and other states and other mosques, they advertise other services and events, all different hours and days. They offer school services. I have a, on my phone on the website right now, four days a week from five P.M. to eight P.M., school services, et cetera, et cetera. I just don't know how we're going to police what they state in terms of the traffic situation as we've, you guys have done a good job at touching on tonight. Traffic impact analysis shows eight A.M. and P.M. peak hours, total trip generation of approximately seventeen to twenty-one, weekend peak hour generation of two sixty-five. It really makes me question and wonder why we need thirty-four thousand five hundred square per prayer hall, which can hold far more people. The area is already overly congested with traffic and has been for many years. I've seen it for my entire life, so much so that the traffic light had recently been installed just a few hundred feet away from the proposed site at the intersection of Route thirty-four. There have been backups during major events and services that, there will be backups during major events and services at the facility, further slowing down traffic. Anytime you build anything of this size, it could be a Costco, doesn't really matter, off a one-lane road, you were going to cause traffic problems. That doesn't take an engineer to figure out, which I do not believe are accounted for in this traffic study. There's also significant, as I said, significant residential population near the site. There's even a condo complex called Ellen Heath, if I say it correctly, right next door, literally hundreds of homes and neighborhoods within a half mile of the area. Another concern is, you know, the discussion about drawing folks from surrounding towns, outsiders from neighboring communities. According to the applicant community impact study, most of the worshippers will, quote, "come from either the township or nearby communities." Given its location, my concern is once again about traffic, but also about safety. The town will have a burden to further safeguard the area. As we've all known, there have been significant, and I'm not suggesting the applicant or its congregants are bad people or anything like that, but there has been issues in our area with burglaries, thefts, other situations, accidents, you name it. Bringing people from outside the town into a facility of this scale and this nature, I think is only going to further complicate our, our burden in, in the whole situation. I'll skip all that. Worshippers that are coming from outside of Aldbridge will presumably come down Route nine to... nine to Route 34 or off of Exit 120 on the Parkway. Those roads funnel directly through our residential communities. Traffics at the various intersections are already a major problem, have only gotten worse. Another concern I have is the intended usage and claims of such, very, very high-level concern and comment on the topic. I know from experience that anytime a person or entity applies, entity applies for a project to the township, the intended use of, is a topic of focus. I went through it myself personally. The applicants made many claims in the various studies about hours of peak usage, traffic impact, and noise, et cetera. What happens if and when those claims and calculations are not upheld years down the road? Even tonight, the applicant's own testimony hinted at possible over-usage, not enough parking spaces, overflow events, exception events, festivals, Ramadan, et cetera. You know, the classrooms and recreational facilities. I just don't know how, if and when we approve the application based on these claims, how we would ever enforce and police those claims down the road. I personally have experience with, for example, the garbage pickup in this town and how there was an ordinance passed about 6:00 AM. They violate it every Tuesday and Thursday and Friday, and no matter what I say and do, it's been rarely enforced. So I don't know how we're gonna enforce everything that's being stated around this application, given its location and size, not anything else. I also have a concern about the building spears and towers. I could be completely wrong, as I'm sure you guys know better than I do, but approximately 10 years ago, there was an ordinance passed, I think that covered houses of worship and the maximum height allowed for these types of buildings. That was passed after the one on Amboy Road was built, that was many, many years ago. I don't know, I believe it covers spears, I could be wrong. I think the maximum is 30 or 40 feet. Again, I don't have it in front of me, I saw it 10 years ago. So just something I wanted to highlight. When I was searching the applicant's mosque in other states, I found the ones that were built in areas where not directly surrounded by large residential neighborhoods, you know, so tight, and also on larger lots of land. An example of such is one I specifically found in Carolin, Texas, that is built on over 10 acres of usable land. We highlighted tonight the usable land, the size, et cetera, et cetera. I think you guys have touched on that. The applicant tonight testified that growth in parking spaces could be, become an issue, splitting services, which I do not believe is a solution because that would obviously just increase the amount of traffic and the frequency of the traffic, in my opinion. I personally don't see how you can get 155 parking spaces exited in a design of that nature inside of 10 minutes, as they said. I have more comments that I'll hold for next time, but that's on the surface, some of the things I wanted to touch on and some concerns I had. Again, we do fully support their right to build this mosque in the Old Bridge, I have no issue with that. Historically, I've been here 46 years. Route 34 in this area specifically is a one-lane highway and road. It's not suitable for something of this intense use, even if it's periods throughout the day or week. It just never has been and never will be, and I know it better than anybody. Off of Route nine, Route 35, Route 18, things of that nature, more accessible, better traffic flow, I just think is the right spot personally. But if they do build it here, I would actually just say one more thing in that, instead of focusing on a 54,000 square foot building that needs 500 parking spaces, which is being the issue, I look at it the other way around. You can build X number of parking spaces based on elevation, buildable area. The focus should be of shrinking the footprint and the nature of what's being built. I don't know why you need seven classrooms and a basketball court and a pool and all these other things. You guys have already touched on that tonight. I think having a place to pray and worship is important, but you can do it for the residents of Old Bridge, it'd be much smaller scale, of course. I support that. I don't support this as it's proposed.
Mr. Canizzo, thank you very much for your comments. The board has taken note. I'm sure that the professionals on behalf of the applicant have taken note and will certainly consider all of your comments.
And one more last, last thing is, I would be open to helping in any way I can discussions. There are many other people who wanted to be here tonight that are not. If there's a way to come to amicable compromise from the resident's perspective, I'm all willing to do that.
This is the opening stage here. They put on their application tonight, sir, and it's not complete, so.
Fair enough.
We'll be continuing on, and again, once again, the board has taken note, and I'm sure the professionals from both sides have taken note. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Anyone else, please? No? No one else wants to be heard tonight? Okay, I'm gonna close the public portion for tonight. Mr. Stoll, final comments?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dusty? I just want to note, I'm looking at Natalie and Vina, that we're gonna carry it for a control date to December 15th, and then we'll, at that time, council will know more of a future date. Perhaps coordinate with the applicants and professionals an agreed-upon date prior to the meeting.
I just want people on television and the gentleman who just spoke that have to be careful, I don't have to be careful. December the 15th is just a whole day. We're not gonna slip in here and put testimony. So no one has to be here because the only purpose of it is that we can set a date probably in February and then have that date with no further notice and have, as Vina called it, a placeholder. So number one, I don't want the public to come, but I also don't want the public to think that I'm telling them not to come, but I'm gonna be here.
That's an extremely fair point, so for the publics to expand on that, we have, the board itself has a meeting on December 15th. We don't know when this application is gonna eventually be heard, when there's gonna be additional testimony. So at the December 15th date, if you watch it on TV, all you're gonna hear is that this application is now gonna be heard on some date in the future. So for everybody here in the audience, you're certainly free to come, we'd love to see you, but don't come here expecting to hear testimony because you're not gonna hear it that night, it's just a control date.
Thank you, Mr. Dusty, and Ms. Watt?
December 15, please note, is a virtual meeting. It is not an in-person meeting. So if you come to the courtroom, it'll be closed.
I believe there's other matters on that evening already. It's quite likely that we might not even get to that that night, I don't know. But I want to assure people that, don't ever think that that would happen, and I think the attorney, Mr. Stoll, wanted you to be assured too. There's nothing sneaky going on. This is an open, public meeting, and it will always be an open, public meeting. The people that sit on this panel, other than the professionals, live in this community. We're all homeowners here. We have the same concerns that you do. I, as the chairman, would never allow that to happen. I can guarantee you that no one else on this board would put their reputation, would not put their reputation on the line. So there's nothing sneaky going on. I also would tell people at home, Old Bridge Township, go to their website, oldbridge.com. You can see, go to the zoning board of adjustment, it's all on there, the schedules are all on there. And you can see the plans, you can see whatever's open to the public, it's there, so please feel free to do so. We encourage people to come down, be part of your community, come down and watch these meetings. We're here, come on down and join us. But nothing underhanded, I can assure you. These attorneys are sworn men with professions, would never allow anything like that to happen. And I can assure you, each of these men, these architects, the professional engineers, there's nothing underhanded. These men have their reputations split on the line and their licenses, so that will never happen. I thank everybody for coming down tonight, I did close the public portion.
I just want to add on one last thing, that the plans, the application material, everything is available on the township's website. At the same time, it is available for inspection in the planning office during regular business hours between 8:00 to 5:00. So if anybody would like to wish or examine the reports or the submission, feel free to stop by.
Thank you, Ms. Watt. Thank you, Mr. Stoll, and your professionals for their presentation this evening. We'll look forward to seeing you then. This matter has been continued, it's going to be on the agenda, scheduled for 12:15. We'll see what happens.
Since I won't see you, all of you have a wonderful Thanksgiving and a holiday season.
Thank you very much. And the best to you and your professionals. Board, we have no further business tonight. We do have general public comments, but I don't see anyone left in here.
I'll just give it to you.
How about comments from the board? I'll start on the left. Everything's good? Mr. Stoner? Mr. Connor?
Jerry?
Anybody on the professional side? No? When is our next meeting? Eighteenth? Seventeenth?
December 1st.
That's right, we don't have a meeting once. Okay. Well, I wish everybody at home and I wish everybody here a happy Thanksgiving holiday.
We'll stand up.
Someone wanna move for adjournment? Moved, is all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, we stand adjourned, thank you all.